All right. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to our budget for 2021. No upfront comments, other than hopefully we'll be here a short period of time. And at that, at that comment, I will turn the meeting over to our city manager, Chris Roberts.
Mr. Mayor and council members and our staff for being here. I'll start off with for having our in-person meeting here at City Hall for the second budget workshop. You know, here we are. Our department heads are all joining us via Zoom, so they won't be on the screen, but they're all sort of sitting on the side in case we do need to call on them for specific questions. I want to start with, this is not the manager's proposed budget. You will be receiving the manager's proposed budget at our May 3 council meeting. We have done some work on the budget, mostly totaling the request. We have started going through the positions requested and are starting to make recommendations on which ones to be funded or not funded. We've done the same on the capital. Those decisions are not final. And I say that again, those decisions are not final. That is for all of the department heads to hear, the public to hear, the council to hear. We're trying to budget or balance the budget with those positions. I can't guarantee you all that's going to come together. That's a hope, but that's sort of where the discussion starts. And as always, y'all are free to agree to disagree with me and add back or deduct. That's what the discussion tonight is all about. Before we get to a recommended thing before you like, do you dislike? So the Water and Sewer Fund, to be perfectly honest, is already looking like it's budgeting. We still could reduce it. We still could increase it, but there's, it's basically balancing at this point. It's not final either. The general fund is still roughly $1.2 million over budget. As all of y'all know, by state law, we are required to have a balanced budget. We do not get to show expenditures greater than the revenues that goes for the Water and Sewer Fund and the General Fund. And also, as y'all know, I try to simplify it into the city has two separate accounting systems or two set of books. One is for the General Fund. The General Fund fires the contains the basic expenditures of the city. Admin, council, finance, recreation, police, fire, all those basic city functions. The revenues for the General Fund come from the local property tax, some of the intergovernmental tax we get from the state, our share of sales tax, which citizens pay as they purchase products and roughly three months later, we get back a proportion of it based on state law, where they give portions of the sales tax back to the cities and the counties. The Water and Sewer Fund is in a separate accounting system. It covers the wastewater plant, the water bill and sewer collection system, water distribution system. It's supported by water and sewer bills. That is the main revenue in the Water and Sewer Fund. And both of those, we now have capital also that's separate from just the main operating budget. That was something council did a couple of years ago, just so that you didn't see huge spike in the basic operating of the departments, that the large capital projects are trapped separately. So that's sort of just a basic. As I said, this is not the manager's recommended. We're still out of balance on the fund. We still will be reevaluating our revenues and reevaluating our expenditures. So that by May 3, we are recommending a balanced budget to the council. We would then schedule a public hearing for the June council meeting. That is where the public hearing will happen and then ask the council to approve the budget if possible at the June council meeting. We do have to adopt a budget by the end of June unless you want to get into a continuation budget. I would never recommend that during the good years. We did not even do that last year. That gets to be a very complicated process. I have spoken to the department heads about the changes that you have in the packet in front of you. They're aware of the changes in the requested positions. They're aware of the changes in the capital. I mean, I hate to say this, but in the first meeting, y'all want to see what the department heads are requesting. It's a lot like folks my age remember this well, some younger folks may not, that Sears Wish Book that when you were a kid, you went through the pages, you circled your stuff and you put your initial by it. Our department heads are good, hardworking folks. They want the best for their department. So I'll let them do it. Sometimes we can't have the best of the best of the best because we do have to have a balanced budget. We do want to keep a reasonable tax rate. We want to provide the best services we can for the citizens. But just like all of our lives, we can't have everything we want. So we have started this process of narrowing that down, get it to the point to where we can get a good balanced budget that will continue to provide the services to the citizens that they're used to, that they deserve. And, you know, try to keep the city moving forward and do the projects that we would all like to see in the next year. And y'all know we can't do them all. Questions before we get started? I have to give a lot of credit to Daphna down at the end of the table. Y'all all know she's very new to Evan. And she and her staff have done a lot of work getting us to where we are today. She's taken the bull by horns, worked with department heads, got everything into the spreadsheet, started evaluating, did a lot of the work you see in front of you. Department heads and Preston have also pitched in to get us where we are. But like I said, I have to give Daphna and her planning staff a lot of credit for getting us to where we are today. So I thought we'd start off. I will share a screen with you.
You said, you said, do we have any questions? In the material that we were handed, sent on the budget, where, where, for example, would I find the salary for the Public Information Officer, the Assistant Personnel position or, I mean, I see the totals. For example, in the administration, I see that they were adding Public Information Officers or an HR consultant, et cetera, but there's just a total amount of sad and there's no indication of what what we're going to be paying these folks or what level of positions they are. Is that anywhere in this material?
Not in this material, but it was in the material for the last meeting. But we can send that out again.
Yeah, I mean, we'll be glad to update that based on what we hear today. The number, there's a couple of the numbers that did change from what you saw the last meeting, and I've got a slide coming up that shows some of those changes. Details of it are not in there. If you'd like to get that, we'll be glad to get that to you. If you should grade that goes along with it. Y'all always adopt with your budget that grade plan, which shows all the positions, that shows the salary ranges for all the positions that are existing in this budget.
The totals are also been up.
Yeah, they are.
Yeah, yeah, but I mean, I would, I would appreciate, I don't mean, I don't know how many times you have to say this. I would appreciate a budget. Why not a budget that I don't have to go to seven different locations to try to figure out what, how many police cars we're buying or what, what the addition of the trash truck actually costs or what the personnel positions salaries compared to others. I mean, I know with enough digging, I don't have the material I had at the first meeting. I mean, I still got it in the house. If it just, I don't know how everybody else feels, just to be beneficial to me to have the information in one place on the spreadsheet. And that's just.
So I mean, we get various, I think I've discussed with all of you, what kind of detail would you like? As always, we get different answers. If you want us to put together one spreadsheet that shows the line items, that shows last year's approved, the previous year's expenditures. Do you want to call over on the right? It's got the basic notes that says this is five new vehicles for five employees, pre-replacement vehicles. It's something like a garbage truck. It is a garbage truck. It's replacing the one-armed truck. That it is a fire truck, but it's replacing one of the trucks. I'll be glad to get you to that very shortly. But that was not included. I tried to listen to all of you and listen to what I thought I heard and get to what you were looking for. We can always get you more and we'll be glad to do a master summary spreadsheet that talks about what you're talking about. Don't mind that, it's.
I have a question on the first page. Under the General Fund revenues, it has miscellaneous increasing 1,008%. That's a huge increase. What is included in miscellaneous new revenue?
$480,000 for building reuse grant.
$480,000 for a building reuse grant.
Can you elaborate on that?
Yeah, what is that?
I'll be glad to. Yes. So at your next council meeting, we will have an incentive agreement and the names out there, global speakers that's here in Evan. They have asked us if we would consider a building reuse grant. It's basically the same grant that UPI got several years ago, where an extended business can submit for a grant when they're expanding or they're using a vacant building. And so we're anticipating potentially getting that if everything is approved. And so it's basically a revenue coming in that would also then go out.
Revenue coming from?
From the state. Yes.
So Chris, are we going to go through this or are you just gonna answer questions? I mean, I have questions too, but I don't want to talk about it.
So I've got a few slides that are summary slides, some about the positions, some about the capital. I thought it makes sense to go through those. And I do have slides of all the departments and we could go through those if you'd like to. Sort of leaving that up to y'all, how much detail you want to get into.
Let's start.
Manager, I was just wondering, what can the impact and number you have for coronavirus funding, what impact does that have on either here or somewhere else?
Need coronavirus funding?
Yes.
I mean, I'm not expecting the coronavirus funding. We're not talking about the, like the infrastructure funding?
Not anything that's prospective, but I understood that most cities your size would be getting several million dollars in funding.
So the feds are talking about sending to the state funding for the individual cities. That's anticipated coming in June of this year, not in next year. So you don't see those funds in next year's budget because it looks like they will be coming in this year. We'll have to make some decisions on how we're going to handle that. That's generally going to be spent probably more on capital than anything. I'm hoping that y'all will agree to use a large majority of that on inflow and infiltration at the our wastewater collection system, but the rules are not real clear yet. There are some basic rules that the federal government has set out. Basically, everybody's telling us to hold on for the details of how to spend that money. So we're hearing roughly that we could receive in June, my memory was 2.4 roughly million dollars that would then have to be spent by 2024 is my memory. And one year later, we would potentially receive the same amount of money. I'm not seeing that one already up on full screen and am I seeing right?
Are you looking for the PowerPoint or?
Yeah.
That's
There we go. Okay. I wasn't positive. It was a little let me do that. I mean, this is a general overall summary of the General Fund projected revenues. You can see the proper tax or expected increase to the growth. This is an Orange County reevaluation year. So we will have to go through a odd computation on revenue neutral. School of Government just recently published some guidance on that. The huge majority of our local taxes do come from the Alamat side. So we're not anticipating a big impact, but it is a reevaluation for year for them. They are updating us on where their numbers are now. As y'all know, citizens can't appeal those values. So generally, they do decrease over time. But we will be getting the latest updates from there so that we can make a good estimate come the manager's recommended budget. Despite COVID last year and everybody's projections of our sales tax revenues really dropping, you know, hindsight's 2020, in the end, that did not happen here. There are places where they really are suffering, but our sales tax did well this past year, has increased from the previous year. And we're expecting a strong growth in it next year. Permanent fees is the same. Y'all heard before, we had over 300 big homes built in Evan last year. That was the biggest year ever. We're expecting that to increase this year, especially with the number of townhomes that are starting up and multiple projects around town. It talks about that miscellaneous revenue going up. And debts proceeds have decreased due movement of fiscal year 21, expected home street loan right debt to the capital fund. You can see what I was talking about here. We started off with the revised budget of 24 million. Projected revenues right now are looking at 23 million. Expenditures right now are looking at 21 million. So we're, we're off a little bit on our revenues and expenditures, roughly 1.2 million. That's what we will be working on over the next month or a couple of weeks actually to, to get those numbers back together and balanced. I mean, there's nothing really drastic or new here. The same basic revenue we've always had. Like I said, we're expecting our sales tax to continue to grow strong and property tax increases are going to be new homes that have been built since last year. We had, you know, a couple of new industries coming online between ADD, between air gas, between Lotus. Unfortunately, you know, you can easily find the property values, the real property values. However, the, the businesses don't have to report their personal values till later in the year. So we still have a good grasp on what those are going to be because a lot of it has not been filed yet. A good example is air gas. Air gas was a very large investment. It was a small building that was built there, but the huge investment was the equipment that you seen out, see out there. And that's all going to be on the personal side. So this one covers the General Fund new positions. You can see from the last meeting we had. We had 21 positions and four reclassifications. You can see what the department has requested and they totaled $1.7 million. We have gone through and evaluated those. You can see in the next column.
I'm sorry. Can you expand that at all? Make it bigger? Sorry to interrupt. It's just very hard to read and I don't think we got this in our package.
We did not.
I'm not sure you can explain that.
There's a zoom in option on there.
There we go. Well, that cuts off the department that I think most of us know the department knows are in. Is that helpful?
It's helpful to me. Can you read it now?
So you can see the positions that were requested. You can see what is remaining so far. The PIO is still in there, the Human Resources Consultant. The accounting supervisor was an internal restructuring. The accounting manager was deleted. It was replaced with an accountant that was not being a manager. You can see the difference in the estimated salaries and miscellaneous that goes along with it. The accounting tech was eliminated. The GIS analyst full-time position was eliminated. We are just now starting a new GIS system that will be online, that will be tied to our website, that all the employees will be able to see. The public will be able to see a lot more information than we had in the past. We clearly need somebody to work with that system and update it. I think we will spend a whole lot less than $88,000 to have a contract with somebody to do that. I'm pretty confident that will grow into a full-time position, but I don't know if that's to be honest, a year from now, two years from now, or three years from now. So we were not recommended moving forward with that. Did recommend the police investigator for the patrol officers. I talked to Chief Caldwell about planning to start those four positions in January. Instead of, I mean, he announced his retirement. We're going to have a new chief coming on board. I don't think it's likely at all. It will be higher in those positions right as the department's in transition.
So is that half, is that half of what the position will actually cost?
It's half, it's a half year of positions plus the vehicles and other equipment that they have to buy for the physicians, which that cost didn't change. It was just the salary positions that changed.
The fire inspector stay, I talked to Chief Lewis about postponing his firefighter positions to next fiscal year. The Main Street Coordinator, I would like to potentially hire a consultant or part-time person even into next year. We actually are in the process of accepting applications for that. We don't have a clear determination if that would be a part-time person or a consultant. We are here for both. Our goal would be to get somebody to concentrate in these first clear six months to maybe 12 months on setting the program up, understanding and teaching everybody what is required in the mainstream program and getting a good foundation set up. Once that is done, I think it'll come back to you probably next fiscal year for a question of, are we ready to hire a full-time position? Sort of play it like that. We haven't determined yet exactly how we're going to fund that program. We still have two years to make these final decisions. Is it going to be a person in-house? Is it going to be somebody we allow a downtown force to hire and work directly to them? That's, that's part of what we're going through. So then in three years, we would be ready to become a full onboard mainstream program. The office administrator, that was requested in the planning department. We actually have money in that budget for a part-time position. The maintenance worker too was recommended. The street supervisor was just an internal reorganization. That was recommended. The sanitation operator supervisor was an internal restructure. The parks and rights supervisor for the trails was not recommended. I think we can get a maintenance contract from the contractor that just built that trail system for us for a much cheaper price than the 99,000. It'll sort of be the same way. We're talking about in the next year or so, year or two, doing some more trails at, like Michael Park. I think that will grow into a full-time position that I don't think we're there yet. And then the specialty vet and market was an internal restructuring and we did recommend that. Basically down to a million dollars where it's estimated now and 21 positions to 10 and a half.
What do you, what do you see the, what do you see the Public Information Officer doing eight to five every day? I mean, I know, I know what a public information officer does. I have one. What will you see this individual from scratch doing from eight to five every day?
So, I mean, we get a lot of requests for a much stronger getting the word out on social media. We're doing that internally. We're doing that internally. We have staff doing the best we can. But we're not doing a lot of it. We're mainly doing it on Facebook. Not doing anything on, the rec is doing a little bit on some of the other platforms like Instagram. But in reality, we're not doing what so many other folks are doing.
Well, I'm not disagreeing with that, I'm just, I'm just saying, start, starting from scratch, eight to five. What are they going to do forty hours a week? For example, I guess my question is leading into this, what is a special event and marketing specialist? Is that not, is marketing, if you're talking about webpage and. Responding to the public on what the city's doing, is that not marketing?
So that one is specifically in the rec department. Our rec department has done programming, but they're trying to actually to start doing a whole lot more programming than they've been doing.
Well, I guess my question would be, why does the rec department need a marketing person? When every other department doesn't have, and we've got a public information officer.
So most every rec department has a special event coordinator and a marketing person. We're one of the very few that don't, and part of that has gone back to we have limited the number of special events that we're we've done. Now that Aaron's here, he's talking about doing a whole lot more. And having somebody that's going to be responsible for those events, not just getting it going. Putting it together, but handling advertising and the marketing of it.
Or events at the Mac.
Or events at the Mac, we'll probably work with downtown for events in the city. All tied back to the recreation department.
But the recreation department is a part of the city. So the fire department has a, if the fire department has a special event. Or the police department has the community policing like they do when they have four locations set up. Or the public works is going to do a special trash collection, who's going to market that?
The P I O.
So why don't they, why aren't they, I mean, why, why wouldn't they market the recreation?
They could, if that's what the council would design.
It just seems like a huge jump to me. We're going from, we're going from zero to two positions that are dealing with city marketing. I mean, I have, I have fifty two thousand members. And and my P I O does marketing, purchasing conferences and public information. And I'm not saying we're the same, but it just seems to me that if you're starting a position. From scratch, that hasn't existed before. It just seems to me that one, one increase in marketing would be sufficient for start until we sort of get an, get an idea. Who's the pub, what the public information is going to be doing for forty hours a week, when there's not anybody doing it now except the department.
So we do in recreation have a contract with somebody basically working part time doing marketing now. So that position, that funding would go away. The twenty thousand. Clearly not enough money in the budget to fund that position. So there wasn't a position at the rec department, we had a retirement. So he's reallocating the money from that position with the special events to restructure. Into that special events and marketing specialist.
So the salary there will actually be greater than twenty thousand?
The salary there will clearly be greater than twenty thousand. Just because that's a restructuring, that's not creating it from scratch, that is using. Salary number that was in that with the twenty, twenty is what we are now have a contract roughly for, for marketing. So basically we're shifting that twenty that's currently in the rec department for marketing to this new position.
P I O will be for all departments to get information out, and not only will it be, will it be for events only, or will it also be a window? For constituents into the departments?
P I O will be for all departments. It will be for press releases, which we don't do a ton of. We'll probably do a whole lot more. It will be the person running our social media program. Which, I mean, Stephanie has done, Stephanie has done a fine job. But we, we are doing it to a very limited. Audience. I mean, we're, we're doing the best we can, we've got our foot in the water. But we're not running a full scale P I O campaign, clearly not. We hear regularly from citizens. All of you may not, but I know some of you do pretty regular. That we gotta do better, that we're not doing what we need to do. But. I can't do that with staff we got.
Because all I see the rec person do is send out baseball practices council training. And they, they've been doing, they've been doing a lot of city stuff too. Yeah, I, I can see us, the P I A, P I O guy person would be, would do everything for everybody. That's correct. And, and leave, leave the rec department out of the marketing business. Aaron has his own marketing department and to send stuff out. Okay, and I'm not sure anybody sees what it is before it's sent out. He hasn't sent out anything I thought, I saw was wrong, but he sent stuff out. So the P I O person can handle everything that is sent out for everybody. And reduce the, reduce that and let them, let them handle until we see that. They're not doing enough for the department, then we can look at that thing, but. I don't see the need for two, two people or two part time people or whatever. That's a lot of money to pay for P I O if it's just doing everything but rec. You know, let them do everything, let them, let them do everything. Yeah, my, my, my comments are not against the need for public information. And I would agree, we're not doing enough. But if you added someone to do it one day a week, that's, that's an increase, so. I just, I guess I was just curious as to why. We have a public information officer that deals with all departments except recreation, and they have their own marketing person.
What events are being planned, how about those for the rec?
I don't know that I have that list at my fingertips right at the moment. That's what I was gonna say, the department heads are on the line, if you want to get Aaron to chime in.
What, I would say in today's world, the police department is going to need more public information officer and planning and marketing. Than the rec department does, rec department advertising has been taking care of itself pretty well. So I, I just, I think if you're, if you're providing a full time public information officer from scratch, that everybody's been doing it. In conjunction with their job, and we're starting fresh with a forty hour week person. Things can certainly handle recreations as much as they can. You know, the other departments.
So I'm hearing, tell me if I'm right or wrong. If we leave the P I O in, we'd rather not restructure to the special event market special?
Right, I'd like to hear who's doing the work right now for the rec department. Coming out, it sounds like they've been extremely busy through the pandemic, I'd like to hear what their plans coming out, because my. What I'm inferring is that they have a lot of projects planned and put Mavon on the map, even more so than we already are, so I'm very curious about that.
They've done that marketing for sports and anything sports related or any of the typical. Things that we do during the year, the Fourth of July, the fireworks, I mean, just all the special events this past year got canceled. So, I mean, we, we have a contract, obviously, you've seen over the last year that the recreation department. Has clearly had more social media presence than the city as a whole. Because last year, that contract was funded. For that to happen, we have started shifting this past year to do some of both, because there wasn't as much going on in the. Recreation department, so. I've heard over and over and over for the last five years, the request for a P I O. David's had it in the budget multiple times, so if y'all are happy with the social media presence we have, we can keep it just like it is. I keep hearing that we need to do more, I hear from citizens, I hear from council members. I need some guidance on how to move forward.
No, I was just gonna say, you're not understanding me. I didn't say we didn't need a public information officer, I asked why we needed a public information officer and a marketing specialist. In one department.
Part of what I just said.
Can you, can you remind us what that restructuring is, that the assistant that's at the desk at the Mac is. Not going to be a position, right?
That's correct.
Proposed by Aaron in the budget.
That has been a full time position, that employee retired this past year. So we're not looking for a full time employee to be at the desk.
It's a salary plus twenty thousand would fund it, the special event and marketing specialist as proposed.
That is correct. And the twenty thousand is already in the budget for the contract.
Right, because we're already paying twenty for the consultant.
Yes.
To do the marketing for the park department.
So what I'm hearing, what I'm hearing or what I, can we not roll that into the P I O position? Now the P I O position take care of all of the special events and marketing as well? Or is that going to leave Aaron shorthanded at the Mac in Parks and Rec? Because if that is just, if their person's job is going to be special events, marketing and also other administrative work at the Parks and Rec department. If that's what that position is, that's a different story than if it's just a special event and marketing, marketing specialist.
So I'll be perfectly honest with you. If we can get a P I O, then it means that we still keep the other position at the salary, though we may change some of the job duties. It may not make everybody happy, but we can clearly move forward with that.
Say that again?
If we can get a P I O in the budget and eliminate that extra twenty. And give it a try, I'm, I'm fine with that.
Are you saying rearrange some duties there at the recs and park for the individual?
There had been, position duties may shift a little bit.
So is that position still standing, or could that be eliminated? Because I know what Aaron proposed was a rotating assistant at the front desk.
I would bet he would like not to eliminate that if he's not going to have the marketing specialist.
I'm sure he wouldn't, but is it feasible?
I don't know that it's feasible. I'd be glad to do some work on it, I'm not prepared to answer that question.
I'm, I'm in agreement that we're going to do the P I O, that's what I'm hearing. And the only question is down to the special event and marketing specialist restructuring. If, if that went away, how much would go away in addition to twenty thousand?
That's, that's it, that's what I'm hearing, that's it.
So we would keep the staff we have, I would bet he'll want to restructure that staff. But at the lower level, that's already been funded.
But really, that wouldn't even go away, because you'd probably still keep the consultant on staff to do the, or no, with the P I O.
I'm saying the consultant doesn't like.
I'm still open, I would really like to hear Aaron's vision. About what twenty, twenty grand will bring in for the community, will bring in for the city and its constituents. Maybe that's not right now, but I definitely would like to hear that, I think that would help.
Well, if we're going to do that, I think you ought to ask all the department heads if they've got a position they could, could work to someone to market their department. Because there's not much, then just do away with P I O, there's not much point having a public information officer going to turn around and fill marketing positions in individual departments.
So what was your request to the rest of the department? I was a little bit confused there.
No, I, I would say Sean asked for, for Aaron's vision, if you're gonna, if you, if, if Aaron's got a vision for marketing his department, I'm sure the other department is to have a vision for marketing their department. If we're going to have, if we're going to have a public information officer to out market for all the departments, if they're not going to market all the departments, then let's convert someone in every department to a marketing person and do away with P I O. There's no sense having both.
I think that's going to cost us more than we're talking about.
I agree.
Tell me which direction you'd like me to go.
I'd like to have the public information officer do marketing for the city of Mavon, which includes all its departments.
I agree with that.
I would too.
We'll make that work.
And, and the P I O is going to be working with department heads anyway, because that's how they're going to be getting the information out and marketing is just part of that.
The P I O is going to make the department heads work harder for a year or two.
But then we'll make their life easier after that.
In the end, it's going to be good.
There's no, no growth in the comfort zone, you know, no comfort in the growth zone.
But yes, departments are going to have to start thinking a lot more about getting the word out and. Social media and what the public would like to see than they have before, because like I said, we've had a presence, but it, we haven't concentrated. On really getting the word out, because we've had a limited amount of staff time to concentrate on it.
I would say this, just, just as a word of caution. To make sure that the department heads continue to tell the story of their department. The way they want the story told, instead of the public information officer. Turning into the, I'll tell you how to market and I'll tell you how to. Put your department out.
I'm with you wholeheartedly.
I would think there would be meetings between the department heads and the P I O, every week or every other week, talking about what's upcoming and so forth.
There will be very regular meetings and discussion. I mean, this is like creating a website.
Sure.
You can create a website, you can do all the work and you can leave it alone. And every day you leave it alone, you don't have to update it every week. But if you don't update it, but once every three years or every two years, it's, you're way behind. That's part of the duties the P I O is going to be working on also, to make sure they're staying in touch with the department heads. Not just with social media, not just with print media, not just with broadcast media, with the website, all of that will be part of the position.
Leave it alone? Thank you.
Thank you. I like discussion.
Can I ask one more question about personnel? And this, this is just me. I would, I would prefer to put the police officers in the budget. Full. And even if there's an understanding that. We're only, we're going to fill the positions after a new chief is appointed and blah, 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 which will probably January first, we know we're going to save six months. But, but we know every year we're going to save money anyway. Because I think we're, I think we sort of. We, we sort of sell, sell ourselves a cheap set of tires when we don't know that. What we've already approved is in the budget, but the full amount's not there, and then we start next year. With an automatic five hundred thousand dollar jump on something we've already approved. So I'd rather see the full amount, even if there's an understanding that we'll start a. Six months later, five months later, whatever, that way we're not kicking, we're not kicking a can that we don't see down the hill, down the street.
But all that does, see, I, I agree with you for next year, all that does this year is that in a year we put five hundred thousand into.
Exactly.
The general fund, I mean, to, yeah, the general fund about.
Well, it means this year that we take, we, we, we show ourselves taking five hundred dollars out. So, I mean, it's tick tock, but I just, it just seems to me it's, we sort of. We sort of get blindsided next year because all of a sudden we got a five hundred thousand dollar increase on positions we've already approved and there's no growth there.
Accounting wise, does that give us any trouble?
Well, I, I mean, it makes the, it makes us that much more in the hole to try and balance the budget this year. And a lot of times auditors will ask, well, why, why is your budget actual off by, when they're off by a certain percentage, auditors ask why? And so those two things. Right, because right now we're one point two million, we're not balanced by one point two million, so if we add that back in, it'll be that much more that we're not. Balanced, that we'll have to cut somewhere else to balance.
There's not a position up there that you're going to hire July first. So, so we, if it's, if it's September twelfth, before we hire the personnel. So, so we, if it's, if it's September twelfth, before we hire the personnel accountant, does that mean we're all budget balanced on the budget because it's too much salary we didn't use?
So on the police side of it, as, as we started talking about it, because of the transition with the new chief. Uh, we were feeling like it wasn't just gonna be a couple of months.
Oh, I agree.
That it was gonna be probably a half a year and it did become a budget. I mean, we can increase the fund balance required or we gotta cut it from the existing budget to pick that up. Uh, you know, we, we had roughly the same number of positions requested last year. Uh, because of COVID, we, we didn't hire any of those. I wish we could have spread it out over the last two years. So some of those positions are, it's not just in the police and fire that were, then request them, the other departments were too.
I don't wanna do, I don't wanna do anything legal, it just, we're gonna, it just means we're gonna have to take an extra five hundred thousand dollars out next year on something we've already done.
I think we always already had the uh, equipment purchase, which in that department is, is a chunk of it. But yes, we, we do realize that we're not funding that position or those positions for the full year. And I mean, if we can make the numbers come together, uh, we can consider it, it just was not looking like the numbers will come together. Uh, with the full salaries for a full year in there. So I'm with you, in a perfect world, I, I'd love to be done with it this year. Uh, I'm just not positive that's gonna happen this year.
It just means you start off in the hole, throw one of them all over.
You are exactly right. But like I said, at least it is getting the, the, the vehicles and upgrades, the vehicles clearly done. You know, if by some miracle, things uh, come together much better than we're anticipating, we'll be glad to evaluate that. But we, we just weren't anticipating that to be the case.
Can you talk about that spot again? Positions.
Let me zoom in.
The, um, the HR consultant. Um, can you? I think the word consultant is starting me off, because it makes me think that it's a, it's an external.
No, so I mean, that's a common job description used in HR departments.
Okay.
We have been uh, very, very busy on the hiring side uh, these last couple of years and. We're anticipating that's gonna continue. We're anticipating that person is uh, gonna be working on new training. Uh, that we've never done before, related to racial and social justice. Uh, that's just like uh, in the HR department, the safety program falls under the HR director. Uh, we're talking about that training process following under the HR department too. Esther talked about uh, needing help before she left. And uh, Bee is here doing a bang-up job, uh, but we need to do more than we're doing. And uh, last year, calendar year, uh, a part-time position was approved. Uh, before David left, uh, and even as we were talking about hiring in that department, there was talk about hiring a part-time position. And then as we got into the whole discussion, uh, new training program, it just became evident to us that it was looking like we needed a full-time position. And he's done, since she's been here practically nothing but hiring. I mean, she's done more, uh, but she's worked a lot of hours, she's got a lot on her plate. Uh, I don't see that slowing down and I clearly think we need another position in that department.
Some of the people uh, under the city of Evan, Berlin?
Under forty-seven is my memory, full-time and full.
One HR.
One HR.
So, so with that, um, in the uh, work session that we had in March. In one place, I saw this number eighty-eight thousand, but then on that, on the separate slide, it said that this request is for a half, half employee. Not to exceed thirty-four thousand plus benefits. So I was just.
So my guess is, uh. We, we did have the part-time uh, money in there.
Okay.
So I'm backed with you on that. We would be utilizing what's in that uh, salary item now and it would not be eighty-eight new, completely new dollars.
Okay.
Am I thinking wrong, Daphna? I mean, that is actually clicking for me.
Let me double check, cause I, I thought one time we were gonna keep a part-time position and add that, but I mean, we definitely changed, so. That may be why the full amount's in there, but we may have decided not to do that, but I'd have to check on that.
So we already have a, a part-time, part-time funding budgeted this year, but not filled, is that correct?
That is correct. So we actually started.
Is to keep part-time and add another, a full-time?
That's what I need to double check.
Okay.
So.
So do you think we need to add a full and a part-time, if that's the case?
So I think I know what Daphna's talking about, uh, but I don't think we will have a, a full-time director, a new consultant. And a part-time under uh, finance. Uh, I can anticipate a part-time in the finance department, uh, but not specifically in the HR department. Although we have lots of part-time positions, uh, part-time positions uh, are not in the detailed budget. They have been, uh, there's general flexibility in most of the departments, if they can justify part-time positions for them. And so some of the discussion we had was as we moved forward. With a different uh. Time sheet, payroll system, a way of doing that more electronically. Uh, and then as we move forward with uh, the new water and sewer uh, system where you, citizens can log in and see their bills. Uh, that there's probably gonna be a need for a part-time person uh, in the city, in the city hall. Uh, my gut was it would be more on the finance side than specifically on the uh, HR side.
I'm not sure I like that, that kind of uh. Oh, manipulation you. I mean, if you're gonna, if you need a part-time position in, in accounting, we should see that.
We shouldn't.
We shouldn't.
I don't think.
Shouldn't be taking a full-time, a part-time position that we approved, a full-time position for moving it somewhere else.
I don't think that was a manipulation. I, I think there's some uh, confusion and some communication, but that's clearly not uh, manipulation.
Well, the accounting tech affairs is, is not, is not filled, but there's no part-time position up there. An, an addition of a part-time position, so you're taking a position out of personnel that was previously approved as part-time and moving it to accounting as part-time. There, but there's no transition record of that, except, except for the fact that it came out in discussion.
So.
I think what we had discussed was that Bee and I have a mutual project that we're working on and possibly having a contracted personnel. Person to maybe even a temporary or something come in and help us with some projects, but not maybe anything super long-term. If I'm remembering our conversation, like I.
I mean, I'm, I apologize if you think that's what's going on, that's not what's going on. I have to assure you of that. But we do have a need for a HR consultant. Uh, we do have a lot of projects that we're trying to do that finance and HR work together on. A lot of it has to do with this new cover system that we have in place that we're not fully utilizing. The accounting tech is not exactly uh, what that was. Uh, but to be perfectly honest, uh, we were talking about a part-time position that would help both departments with some of that. And it was not meant to be manipulative.
Uh, the human resources department also covers risk management. And uh, that, that involves all the insurance claims that we had. Like when lightning hits a car pole, I was amazed at how long it took to, to, to get a, that claim resolved. And of course, uh, we had a number of police vehicles that were damaged last year. And all of that is under him, under him, the citizens, as we had a structure in that.
And uh, that is clearly one of those uh, pieces of a department that is not getting simpler and easier over time. It's just taking more time and more rules and regulations uh, that the HR department handles.
Thank you.
Anything else?
So you're gonna, you're gonna move the part-time money from the personnel position, part-time personnel position into the full-time assistant position? Or what are you gonna do with that funding?
So, I mean, we're gonna look into using the part-time position that's in HR to fund the eighty-eight, one thirty-three and reduce that extra money. I think that's what you were asking.
Yes, thank you.
But the next time you see that, uh, that number will not be as high as it is right there. And I apologize for the confusion. Uh, so this was just the uh, general fund capital improvement plan, it does not have all the details in there. Tim, you had requested that and I don't know if this is exactly what you were wanting to see or not. This, this is the five-year plan. Uh, I mean, as, as y'all know, when you look at uh, the next year, department heads are concentrating hard. On what's gonna happen in the next year. Uh, they are not putting tons and tons of work into the following four years. Uh, they are trying to think about their department, thinking about growing their department, thinking about the big ticket items. Uh, but generally, as the new year comes on, a lot of times the stuff that's in the capital a year or two out gets more, looks at it. Uh, they're reevaluating, is it really gonna be next year, is it really gonna be the following year? Uh, so I mean, I, I think this is a good planning tool. Uh, it's not written in stone, but I think it gives uh, the council and the staff. Uh, some clue of the, the amount of money that's possibly coming out.
No, I was, what I was wanting to see is the uh. It's, it's like you said, the department has worked very closely on what their next year. And so, and each year we sort of, they sort of update the capital improvement plan. What I wanted to see was from the capital improvement plan that was projected for this year's budget year, what has been, actually been included in the budget? For example, if the, if the sanitation department asked for a dump truck, shown the capital improvement plan for this year, is it this year? But if it's not, then sort of kicking the can down the road to, so to speak. And I assume that their, their budget requests mirrored their capital improvement plan.
So that's correct.
Yeah, so I, I guess I just wanted sort of to see a summary of, of, and I guess a little of that has to do with the fact that we didn't have the. We don't really have a line item on what's increased and what's not increased. Uh, on the individual budget line items. Does, does that make sense, Chris? I mean, if, if we were supposed to buy it this year, based on the plan and we're not buying it this year, then logic would say we're gonna have to buy it next year.
So. That, then, this would reflect what they requested and then this reflects uh, what we're recommending so far.
Right, and then in the five-year plan, um, anything that wasn't funded this year, I pushed into next year.
Yes, and so a lot of times what also happens is it may be that what they were predicting last year for this year, the list ends up changing. Uh, based on comments they've heard from citizens, based on things that have changed in their department. Based on comments they may have heard from uh, management, from council. Uh, but I think this is what you're talking about. So at our last meeting, and let me just not show the full page and zoom into the top. I think that's probably the. Yeah, you're mainly gonna wanna see that.
So actually, the majority of it's not funded, is that what I'm seeing?
So let, let me explain some of it, cause I, I wouldn't say that's quite true. But I completely understand why you're saying that. Uh, so that was the planning inspections expansion. Y'all included a budget amendment at the last meeting, uh, because we figured out we could get that done and get that done in this current year. So that one's not in next year. Uh, the new police station, and I would say the same for the uh, fire station. Both chiefs recommended uh, some acquisition of land and some design. I would rather not, and Daphna both agreed to this, that uh, those are not one-year projects. Those are probably three to possibly four-year projects. Uh, I would rather adopt a capital project ordinance, uh, where we show you uh, the, the, basically like we did the uh. The green one, we show you a number for uh, land acquisition for design. Uh, we show you a number, it's estimates based on what construction could be, based on what contract administration would be. Based on what outfit would be, uh, based on what some miscellaneous would be. Uh, so if we get clear direction from council that we're ready to start the process of the police station. Uh, we would, instead of budgeting that, showing that capital going through the roof for a major project. We're not just buying some cars or uh, doing a small building exam uh, expansion. You know, we're talking about a twelve, fourteen, fifteen million dollar building or whatever it is. Uh, that we uh, have a capital improvement uh, ordinance that uh, those budgets go on until the project's done. So you're not every year re-adopting it, putting more money in, uh, we're gonna talk about how to fund it. And uh, council would adopt that budget and then it would run for three years until the project was completed.
But, but in, in, in the case, in the case of these two projects specifically, I mean, we know we've got to buy a piece of land. And if, if you're planning on building in three to four years, then the land needs to be purchased in this year's budget. Which is what I think the, the fire department and police departments capital improve plan for this year included was the purchase of a piece of land for those two building projects.
That's right.
So, but we don't have it in the budget for this year.
So we would be bringing back to you a capital uh, project ordinance that it would be included. So it would be separate, it would not be, so you're adopting a budget for the year. So on a multi-year uh, budget, you can adopt the capital project ordinance. And that project ordinance then runs with the project, you're still gonna see the numbers uh, with your budget. We're still gonna show you what it is, uh, but it is gonna be kept separately uh, in the accounting system. And those numbers will run year to year, instead of carrying forward. Uh, increasing the budget and it just changing every single year. We, we just believe that's a much smoother way to do it, Evan's done that many times in the past. Uh, so if we get clear guidance from the council that we want to see uh, the police department planning land acquisition start. Uh, then we'll prepare capital project ordinance.
When, when will we do that?
We can have that to you in June. We didn't have that to you in June.
No, I mean, when will you, when will you, we'd be given the opportunity to give you clear guidance? That we wanna move forward purchasing land for that.
I'm ready to hear about all these things tonight. That these were the requests that the department heads made. Uh, I, I just think definitely thought it makes sense to do it as a capital project ordinance because those are uh, multi-year projects where most of these others are not. Uh, so we can clearly have that to you in June with the budget, but it wouldn't be part of just the one-year budget. It's gonna be a multi-year budget.
We, we, we're going with my initial, my initial concern, again, of the capital improvement projects that we anticipated to be expended this year. What, what's the number that we're purchasing or expending and what's the number that we're not?
It's a long number.
Well, we don't have the sheet though.
You don't? Not glad to get it taken. This is what the total was, my memory. Yeah, that's some of the uh, carry forward, for lack of a better word, and that's the number that's being recommended. Uh, that does not include the, that one point seven five and that number four the start of the station board.
So the, the second column is what we're actually purchasing or what you actually showing budget this year?
That's what is in front of you in the packet that you were sent is the numbers in this column.
The third column. The third column.
The third.
The second column are projects current, budgeted in the current year that, that were approved last year that need to be turned over because they weren't started.
That's, that's, that says remaining C I P budget.
Right, that's the third column. Yeah, that's the columns that's in the packet that was sent to you.
Okay. Well, the, you don't have, no, you do not have a five hundred fifty thousand dollar fire engine in the budget this year. Unless I missed it. You do not have a sidearm automated garbage truck as well this year unless on.
I'm sorry, we didn't send you this C I P. You only sent the departmental capital. This is, you were not sent the C I P. I apologize.
Hello.
I'm probably getting confused. Well, I mean, the budget we have, the, the, the concern I had was that we've got a lot of stuff on C I P that was not budgeted. Uh, and one, for example, the, the sidearm automated trash truck and things of that nature, fire trucks, uh, third street corridor, all this, this kind of stuff. It's not budgeted that I've seen, but you're saying it is.
In the C I P.
In the C I P budget. The, the capital in this, in what you received is the departmental capital that's budgeted in the general fund and the C I P is in a separate capital fund.
If, if he has it on that column there, he is including it in the overall budget for this year.
So none of the stuff we reviewed for tonight has any of this stuff in here. So how are we to know that that was budgeted?
So, uh,
I mean, I, I've been doing this, I've been doing this twenty-eight, this is my twenty-eighth year, and this is, this is hard to follow.
I'm with you. So, I mean, this is not the manager's recommended. Uh, we were trying to have discussion about, do you agree with these things to go into the manager recommended?
Okay, all right, that, that, that's helpful.
Uh, that was the main point of the meeting tonight, was to have uh, the discussion of these large capital items of the uh, positions, because that's the main increases in the budget. So, we're looking for guidance on the positions like we just went through. Uh, we're looking for guidance on the large capital, which is broken out separately uh, in the budget approval process. Uh, the small capital is in front of you, which is generally the stuff we try to keep below twenty-five thousand. But this is the large capital uh, items that so far I have recommended, the staff has recommended. And we're looking for guidance. I mean, right here is a good example. We're, we're already off one point two million dollars and you're right, you can see a lot of stuff there uh, that's not being recommended at this point.
No, that actually looks good because when I looked at it, at the budget, none of the stuff was in it.
Yes.
So, you know, that's refreshing to me. I was thinking next year would go, would gonna be awful.
Chris question for you. Uh, the new police station is a million seven fifty and the new fire station's five hundred thousand. Is that by the, about those land purchases?
So, that one is clearly land purchase and design. That is a much bigger building than a fire station. I mean, we just built the fire station that the.
I know, but just simply, I mean, is the five hundred just the, okay.
Six acres versus two acres.
So you're looking for some feedback on these items and what's, what you're showing recommended and not at this point?
Yes, ma'am. So that's why I was saying that one's in the current year budget. That one we're recommending in a capital project ordinance.
Yeah.
Uh, my memory is that one
computers.
Was computers and equipment uh, in the police department that you saw your uh, new fire station. I mean, I was having a hard time getting the training tower in uh, with uh, the fire truck and the positions. I'm looking for a little guidance on that. The new engine was there, uh, Fielddale. Uh, I didn't, went out there, rode it and went and looked at the uh, uh, the rating on the road. Clearly Fielddale, for the past several years, we've been talking about Fielddale and Faust, Faust was clearly in much worse shape than Fielddale. Uh, Fielddale can clearly wait and will still be a narrow street, uh, but it is in good condition. Uh, that was the equipment set at Public Works. The Giles Street Park, we recommended, but it was a low number and was moved into the departmental capital. Uh, railroad fence is the ongoing traffic separation study. We've been working with the O C T and the rail division about. Uh, I thought we clearly needed the sidearm garbage truck. Uh, most of the uh, I T stuff, it appeared to me clearly needed to stay in the budget. So you can see the servers, the firewall replacements that were at end of life, bar readers for uh, server rooms. That camera that we have on top of that uh, black screen right there shows us, doesn't show us real well though. So we're gonna continue live streaming our meetings in the uh, council chambers. We clearly need to make some improvements. We're wanting those video improvements to work with our audio equipment in there should uh, provide a much better feeling uh, when you are sitting at home watching uh, these meetings on uh, YouTube. These were the recommendations from B P A and uh, so far those that stayed in there, we went over the different uh, sidewalk extensions, the planning for a couple of our uh, sidewalk improvements in the future.
Yeah, those, the twenty thousand dollar ones are, are not constructed, right?
Those were designed. Uh, y'all know over the years, uh, there's no way we can get the design, the easement acquisition and the construction done in a year. So we're doing a two-hundred-foot sidewalk extension and there's no easements required. Uh, so we've tried to start splitting a lot of these sidewalk improvements into multiple years. Um, and y'all are saying with the green one, we spent a year working on easement acquisitions on some of these projects that are complicated, but until we do the design work and figure out the right of ways and the property lines, it, it's hard to predict uh, how long it's gonna take to get that project done.
Then we're gonna do the four street sidewalk. On the side, we've moved it across the street.
So originally, I had to think about my directions or the existing sidewalk uh, heads down south on Fourth Street on the west side. Uh, there are several neighbors uh, beyond there whose homes porches get very close to the right of way. If you look on the east side of Fourth Street, uh, those towns are set back further. So originally, uh, the uh, call to consultant that recommended it said stay on that side. We've heard from multiple homeowners and y'all have over the years that uh, they're not interested in sidewalk on that side. Uh, so the discussion was moving the sidewalk to the east side.
Well, we have a policy there. We're not putting sidewalks in areas that people don't want. And there's two, there's three houses, one in particular, that is gonna be two feet from the front door or from the front steps and that is not right under any sense of imagination. So if we put Four Street, it needs to go across the street. Um, so.
So we've heard those conversations and.
I thought it already been moved.
Okay, I just wanna make sure.
Yeah.
France has reevaluated it to move it to the east side.
Okay.
And to make sure that the number's there.
Archie Wilber's house is, is like within two feet of where that sidewalk will go and that's not fair.
And so I mean, I think we've heard from two to three different property owners.
And we don't, we shouldn't be put, you know, if, if the neighbor don't want a sidewalk, we don't need to be put spending the money to put a sidewalk in where they're not, where it's not wanted.
We hear you loud and clear.
Okay, that's a big though.
Well, I, I mean, I, it's not that I disagree entirely, but I also think at some point safety is an important consideration to make as well. And this is also part of a route to school for safety, for kids to walk to school safely.
And I mean, this was one of our higher priority uh, sidewalk extensions uh, since we did our back end plan.
Tennis building. Remember discussion on the last time we met? Still in there?
Unless, unless you tell me otherwise.
No, no, that's fine, that's fine.
I will tell you, uh.
Someday, there should be a tennis building ever.
Then.
Air conditioning, because when the heat get cool, guess what? Stay home.
That number included a oh, don't quote me, ten by twenty or either a twelve by twenty office and a separate storage room. Uh, I asked uh, Aaron to reduce that number and got it down to a more reasonable size office and storage room. And that number.
The new price is one seventy.
All right, I, I was thinking one seventy-five. Uh, so with the, a building more the size of I think what we originally talked about several years ago, uh, that number would be one seventy.
And that includes bathroom facilities?
Yeah, that would include uh, you know, just a long rectangular building with storage space for their equipment, with a small office with bathrooms, uh, with a shade overhang sort of built into the roof, almost like a carport uh, with a water fountain.
I think if we don't do that, we need to do something to fix the current bathroom facilities at that location. So.
Make them available, yes.
Yeah.
Uh, and so I was actually trying hard to get to those bathroom facilities because based on what I've heard, I would agree and I would think we could say, I mean, I think we could upgrade those bathroom facilities for the time being if it's a year or two year or relatively cheap rather than just leaving it in the condition of the end.
Would they be raised eventually? You would eventually tear them down?
I mean.
If the big scheme happened.
You've heard us talk, we don't have an overall plan yet.
Yeah.
Uh, so we tried to fund some things that were, we were hearing, we thought pretty clearly that needed to be done. My recommendation would still be to let's get our recreation master plan done to see what we hear come from the communities. What would they like to see over there? Aaron did a great job pulling together, I don't remember, six or eight different things we could do over there. That was him dreaming, that was him putting it on paper. Uh, I would like to hear from the council, from the public, what folks would like to see over there before we just start funding them all.
I, I agree with that and I think that, you know, we wanna have as much citizen input as possible on the overall plan. And in light of that, we don't want that facility to go without any restroom facilities indefinitely. So if we can fix them so that they are usable until we have a plan moving forward, I would highly encourage that.
I mean, Rick might spell for it, it'd be good.
Yeah, they're, they're usable.
And the next week I will get over there and see.
Without getting the E D G C.
I, I would like to, for lack of a better word, do some value engineering on how to extend the life of bathrooms. I, I would like for us to have plenty of neat bathroom facilities, even if all we're doing is upgrading sinks and toilets and getting the epoxy paint on the walls and getting temporary stalls installed if we need to. I, I think we've been relatively cheap. I mean, I've done that, working with the red department several times in my career where we can get some improvements done and not spend a lot of money and then figure out the big picture.
Good question about the peers there. Um, is that a multi-year project? My apologies. I thought they're under construction right now with this.
So actually, uh, I think I said, uh, take the peers out in the end. So, unless I've completely missed something, I went to like Michael one night after work and uh, looked at the peers that were there. They did need some help, but they're not unsafe. They can sister some wars and really get a longer life out of the peers. The peers uh, that are there are the wooden peers that aren't right at the marina. So as you pass the marina, you hit that curb and then you start perfect that, there's a wooden peer there. There are.
That's what, that's what that's representing.
And there's another one. So uh, I, I think they could clearly last with some minor improvements, sort of like the bathrooms, not as major as bathrooms, but we can clearly get some more life out of those and uh, get those fixed and avoid that for the time being. What you have, what you have seen is the floating docks. So uh, there are very clearly new floating docks right around the marina. Uh, they're not quite done. Uh, they're very close. If you went out there today, you'd see where the the wood floating dock doesn't actually attach to the new floating dock over there. Uh, they're waiting on some parts to come in, uh, but that's what's been done this past year and should get completed uh, during this. But this is the, sort of departmentally mounted wooden peers uh, around the corner from there.
I see that you got less funding in for the Lebanon or like Michael connector. What's, what changed?
Oh, uh, so we did the same thing. We had a field trip out there with me and Preston and Franz and Aaron and the uh, the guy that built the trails at uh, Kate's Farm. We uh, looked at the route it was going. We found a new route. So you would start with the new subdivision on the other side of like Michael, the retreat. It now has a multi-use path that goes through the retreat. Will eventually cross the road, go up Lebanon through the two Havenstone projects. And that's probably gonna be done this summer, this fall. Uh, it then just literally stops at the cities like Michael property. Uh, we had numbers talking about doing sidewalk extension all the way from there. Uh, we had numbers using a uh, pre-built bridge that crossed the creek. Uh, and there was two different options on that. Uh, the number you see now is uh, for the time being, a path that cuts through the high ground on the city property into the woods a little bit away from the road. Uh, that would be the width of a multi-use path. It would be the Chapel Hill gravel. Uh, it would stay on that higher ground. Uh, as you get to the bottom, uh, come back to the road. Uh would entail some curving gutter along that side of the road. And then a basically a concrete multi-use path along that culvert. And then tied back to the entrance. Uh and to the extension that's being done as part of the Tupelo Junction project. Uh so we we did change the design, we sort of combined some of uh what Franz had quoted. Uh just doing it all concrete and uh we got away from. Crossing the creek with a bridge. Uh as y'all know, we are clearly going to be doing. Major renovations to the Lake Michael spillway. I did not want to get a bridge down there. Cause we don't have a design on what's gonna happen there. We don't know if that spillway is gonna be the same length as it is. Is it gonna be extended? Uh we have no details about that. So I was a little leery of putting in a structure that a year and a half from now we might find, we just gotta absolutely pull it up. Lay it over to the side and you're back to starting down there and not being able to safely get to Lake Michael. So we did figure out. But there wasn't enough room between the edge of pavement and the culvert, that if we put some sidewalk in there, we could get a cap in there.
So with this, I can park at Lake Michael and and do a loop around the entire lake and come back to my car?
No.
No.
Uh that does not include that. Uh this includes the. Uh sort of the first multi-use path that's gonna be, it's in construction now, part that's already built on Lebanon. To where those people uh can safely follow that path and get to Lake Michael. Uh Tupelo Junction is doing another piece of it that'll get you to Lake Michael. Uh they each corner is the property adjoining that. They are planning to do a multi-use path that'll go down to Ninth Street. Uh that would be a separate project to pick up for that trail of starting in uh uh the retreat subdivision. And take it back around uh the lake. That does not include that.
Looks like we're just talking about the northwest corner, the smallest of corners right there.
We are.
Okay.
Though in the future, um.
Yeah.
Couple plans.
Yeah.
What kind of plan is there for pedestrian safety getting from Tupelo Junction across Lebanon to Lake Michael?
I mean, it has not been designed. It was part of your approval that they required to do it. Uh I think uh will be very shortly now that things are coming together. Havenstone requested D O T. To reevaluate the speed limit. Uh I think when cars start pulling in and out of there, I mean now. There's really nothing to slow traffic down. Unfortunately, you got a road from both directions headed downhill. Right at the Lake Michael entrance. Uh cars are gonna slow down as other cars are now pulling out of three different subdivisions. Uh just uh west of there. Uh you're gonna have another connection right at Tupelo Junction close to there. Uh it will be some kind of high visibility crossing, because we're gonna have to have a crossing there. Uh it could warrant the flashing lights that you push the button. Uh I don't know if any of them sort of locally here, uh M L K going into Chapel Hill eighty-six. It's the one example that pops up in my mind, uh where you have sort of mid-block crossings that. Are high visibility, the lights are blinking. That's probably what's gonna end up getting designed there.
Did the um suggestion to to put a roundabout there um get any traction?
Uh it got lots of tracks in it, traction, it just seemed physically impossible. Uh there's a lot trying to happen there. You got curbs, you got gray. Uh you got right-of-way issues. Uh roundabouts are wonderful things. They do take up. A significant amount of space, especially when you're on a road that has that much travel and you got. Uh stagecoach and Lebanon all coming together there, so the feasibility of it just did not make any sense, but. Uh we pushed and pushed and pushed.
I agree with Patty, I have concerns that getting across a road up there, that's that's the.
It it has to be a high visibility crossing and like I said. Uh you can't just put up what you want. You do have to warrant it, you have to show that it's needed and. A lot of faith that people see some kind of very high visible crossing there. I I think people see the signs with the light on. That would be something we may have to, the signage part of it, pick up part of the cost on it. Uh but in that location, it it's gonna be well worth it.
Thank you.
Can you go back up towards the top?
There more?
No, I'm looking through the uh Joff Street Park.
So we got moved to the uh the the budget capital. So we did just move that fifteen into the the general operating budget instead of the big capital.
It's on that list, it's just you you didn't put it here, you put it in general.
Yeah, there's a note over there that's not showing. So I mean, you can see the other things that uh were talked about, uh mostly over at uh Walker Street. Uh we've heard very clearly that we do not wanna do a way with the the baseball field on the corner at Walker Street.
No.
Uh so the number you had before was for lighting both fields. Uh that number is for lighting just Walker Street. Uh it would be the new style lights that do not light up the entire neighborhood. That concentrates the light on the fields like we have in the uh new community park. Uh so that lighting's in bad shape. We've been talking about that for a good while. So we did include that in next year's budget.
So that's what they used to call the youth field, right? It's on the corner of Second and Jackson.
Yeah.
First and First and Jackson.
The field, we did not cut the outfield out of.
Yeah.
Yeah, we messed up with that tennis.
Yep.
That's.
Took up a lot more space than I thought it was going to.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think the design really presented the damage it was gonna do to the Walker Field. It was essentially eliminated the baseball field, which is one of the probably one of the most historic things in town, was that baseball field.
I had never heard that till you mentioned that thing and I was shocked that that.
Walker Field was, I mean, there's there's some ball players played on that field back in the forty, fifty, sixties.
But hindsight's twenty twenty. You and I had this conversation and I said, I can't argue with you about that.
When we saw the design for the tennis court, I mean, that used, that was a long field anyway, but it didn't, it didn't. We still show you, the design still showed the baseball field there. You technically don't have a baseball.
It it's not functional as a baseball field. If you could only allow five to ten year olds on it, but. Uh you can't stop people from getting on it and I mean, it's like Aaron's talking about, we got people out there hitting balls into the tennis court and. Uh I I'm with you, but. I I don't know how to fix that.
If we got rid of that building, both of those terrible buildings and scooted it that way, would that maybe um allow for it to stop?
So I was part of that decision to do what we did and we're gonna think a little bit more about that before we say yes.
Yeah.
Uh so that's why I was saying, a lot of this stuff, despite uh Aaron having some great ideas. I I'd like to hear from from y'all, from the public, and if you're gonna do that, you have got to make sure that it's clearly gonna work. So I'm feeling very good about the one field staying there. I think there it is and I think everybody wants to see it stay there, so. I'd like to get some good safe lighting on it uh and not what we've been dealing with.
Sounds good. I I'm thrilled to see the basketball courts.
Yes, thank you. Is that what basketball parking is?
So uh we talked about taking out basketball parking, so we're talking about putting that. In the uh corner where the the white store to build in and the current recycling center is. Uh so that would be a number.
I don't see that.
Uh for a, that wasn't the uh high dollar branded. Uh I can't remember what they call the the stuff they, I think it's super paid, but that's not the right number. That sort of epoxy coating that Aaron was talking about.
Well, I thought we were gonna do the tennis courts, the old tennis court. They don't stay the same.
We haven't heard uh good support on putting the tennis courts, putting the basketball court at the old tennis court.
So you're planning to build new basketball.
So we're talking about building a basketball court in that lot right behind the uh historic museum.
That's fine.
Would be fenced in. Uh the existing gravel lot needs some help, uh but that doesn't include paving it. Uh we can worry about that down the road as we figure out what we wanna do over there. So we would improve the existing gravel lot, uh but that won't get a court uh in that corner. Uh my memory was that does include some lighting. Uh but it didn't include stadium seating and all the other bells and whistles.
Yeah, we we need that, yeah.
That'll be a great asset.
I've experienced basketball courts next to playgrounds and that's what we got up at the tennis courts. I would clearly not recommend that. Uh if we're getting rid of the playground, that would be another option, but. Uh I've heard too many stories from too many mamas about. Uh the language at the basketball courts and that's just not a good combination.
That's all in town pollution.
Uh the blue lights uh for the parks that uh that was mainly Kate's and uh like Michael. I remember we had one more at the back. You know, and y'all all know when you get into lowline areas. Out there may break, if you're on top of the hill, you have bad cell phone coverage. Uh pretty much everywhere else around town, you you have bad coverage in the lowline areas, so. That was getting uh some coverage uh at Kate's Farm and at Lake Michael.
That's maybe four of those or how many units is that?
I was thinking it was three altogether.
Okay.
I mean, I would agree, most people today have a cell phone. It it is a very different world, but we do have some some poor coverage uh in those areas. Uh. The amphitheater, the community park, we talked about uh fundraising on that and I said, Erin, show me the fundraising. And I think we can talk to the council in coming up with the rest of the money. Uh did not just include it in the budget, but if y'all would agree. If they can raise half the money from community support, would you be willing to fund the other half?
That'd be great.
Chalk city comfort.
Sure.
So.
Chris, I thought I saw, saw the um the Mac upgrades on this information we got. Is that not after?
The Mac upgrade?
Well, it just said upgrades and I'm assuming it's.
Oh, that was some small stuff and the general departmental stuff. That was not any major Mac upgrades.
I saw that. We saw some bullet data, I thought it might be this.
Uh.
Not being minded.
Yes. Uh I did take out the Christmas direct decorations. We did fifty last year. Tell me you want those back in there. I'll find it, it's just, we still have a pretty decent gap to fill. That's one of those things, if numbers all start coming in better in the fall, we could add in very quickly. Uh but where we're now, I I.
I think they were pretty well received last year.
I agree wholeheartedly.
I I I think with that amount of money, it would work, it would work what we put into it last year.
Wait, can we maybe consider a reduction, like thirty thousand?
I don't mind. Give me to see if what we could do for twenty thirty.
Yeah.
Why?
For Christmas decorations, which is a smaller.
What was wrong with the ones this year?
Yeah, not replaced.
Adding more.
That's what he had, he had requested adding.
Oh.
It was nice getting a strong feeling. I don't have strong feelings either. It was nice having the new stuff last year, but maybe we we do it every other year or something like that.
We'll keep it in the back of our mind. Uh if things come together, we'll try to get a little bit more in there and uh. Uh please. Stephanie, where are we? For dinner's not quite.
Until six.
Okay.
Time is, it feels like they.
It is five forty-five, it should be around.
I need to stand for just.
Are we on break? Are you just?
You wanna take two minutes?
I I don't, I'm fine, I was just curious.
I I just, I need to stand. Alright.
Those are all white ones. The old.
That's right.
So uh. I think, I think we need to start the process for the police.
Okay.
Whatever that means. I don't think, I don't think delaying, even even if you face the, even if you separate the land. Acquisition from the design and just do the land acquisition. There's there's not. There's not any more land being created in the area that the chief indicated that would be premium for a police station. And we're probably gonna have to buy, not just vacant land now, we're probably gonna have to buy something that has a structure. To get those areas, so the sooner we start budgeting, the sooner we budget, start trying to acquire the land, let's. I think the better off we'll be. You wanna put that in the capital improvement. Uh total project, that's fine, but I think we should show at least, show the budget for, showing the budget to land purchase this year. So that we can move forward uh and get it, get some land.
With Chief's comments that we need to be more closer to the after your interstate.
Yeah, I mean, my conversations, like the conversations we had when it budgeted, the conversations I've had with personally. He wants it out somewhere near one nineteen and moving up the road, that general area, that big circle. So he has access to town, interstate, uh problem areas.
What about buying a facility like the old one?
Well, that's, I think that's a perfect location, but you know, I don't know what it's gonna cost to buy that building. Uh but you know, you had the church across the street uh that that was removed. And I think Steinbeck owns that property, but there's, there's, uh there, we're gonna have, it's gonna get all seized up if we don't do something soon. And uh if each year you put it off. Buying a land, you're moving, you continue to move the project forward and you know, that was one of the primary concerns. Our budget was, they need space and needed facility and that's, that's in the Calia. Uh information as well for the accreditation.
Now, we've had some discussions, or Chris has, but it's hurt about the. It's either he's not selling it and only leasing or what?
So I mean, that's the main, which we've never looked at purchasing in ourselves. Uh I can tell you, since I have been here, I actually don't know how many people. Remind if you know the name, have the contact for that property. Only one has come back uh saying that there was some interest in. Tearing the building down and then building a new facility that would then be leased. Uh uh I I don't know the people, I think they're good people. Uh but so far, we, I haven't heard back from developers uh that they were interested. And it could just be the price they were offering, I I don't know all the details.
Well, you'll have, you'll have to tear the building down. I mean, oh, you're just, you're gonna be wanting to acquire land, that 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 building's not gonna serve anybody.
Oh, you're gonna tear that building down, it's it's.
Yeah, so how how about the, how about the area between the uh. What's that little loop there, it's car wash and and one nineteen where it's got three hous, three or four houses in there?
So.
Is that big enough?
Size, uh the planning department is doing an evaluation of all the land. Size, uh the planning department is doing an evaluation of all the land in the one nineteen area and the Mavon Oaks area. Not completed that yet, but basically they're evaluating all the properties or could you put together a cou- couple pieces of property that get five to seven acres? Uh we would prefer that already has access to water or sewer. We might be dreaming and that's, that doesn't come together, but I think we're gonna find there are several locations.
What about the old fifth street, the the new fifth, not the new fifth, the old fifth street? What are you talking about?
We're.
Houses along there.
We're gonna be looking at all that.
I think it would be prime.
No, I have sewer.
It done?
But I mean.
But it's not far.
That's not far. But that's, that's where we re, we just re, we just resumed that a couple of months ago for uh this business.
Yeah, that was on the.
On the south side.
South side.
You're talking about the north side. So I mean.
North side, south, yeah.
We can talk about all these different places.
Edwin Scott is owns that land on the corner of of the new bypass and what is Third Street.
That's right.
Corner, that would be, that would be a great place for us.
So there's lots of good possibilities, but we we need to do an evaluation. If I'm hearing from the council as a whole, you would like for us to continue to proceed.
Yes.
And pull together something in a capital project ordinance. I mean, we would be happy to do that.
Yeah, that's true.
They have already started uh getting things ready to do a little evaluation. Uh I think a lot of the places you're talking about are good possibilities.
Well, if we do, if we do a capital ordinance now for, for example, a fire station, does that mean we have to budget something this year?
So you can take it a step at a time, uh where you would budget exactly what the chiefs have recommended. Uh taking the first step for purchase of the land, we can consider doing the land and the design. Uh we'll get you numbers on both of those. I think it would be a little much to try to uh predict uh what the total cost is gonna be because we don't know where the land is gonna be. We don't know how much grading is gonna be required. We don't know if there's gonna be water and sewer.
I think it's really irrelevant, it's really irrelevant anyway, you don't need no construction projects.
Right.
So I'm, what I'm looking at is getting, getting the land secured. We know from the facility report where they need to be. Uh and if we can get one, the, there's two, and I hadn't seen the facility report on fire station, the detail one. Uh I know, we know that there's two projected sometime in the future.
Yes.
So one of them, at least we could get land for one of them started though.
And I hope to give you all that uh study that was done on the fire department uh tonight or tomorrow. Uh but I do have that. Uh so yes, if if council is comfortable with us continuing this process on a west fire station and on a more centrally located police station, we'll be glad to get that started. Uh get it to you with the budget and uh get the uh evaluation of the sites. I mean, y'all know that's uh the area in high demand in Mavon. Uh and you're exactly right, there are already people anticipating the completion of one nineteen this summer. So if we do nothing, we're probably gonna be left with nothing down there. So we, if council is interested in it, and I'm with you, I think now is the time to to get that ball rolling and start evaluating sites. You're not committing to, you can commit if you want to, but by taking the first step, you're not committing to, we are gonna build this, we're all gonna do it next year or the year after. Uh but I I think getting the the land under control is a very important first step with the market that we're in right now.
We know, we know we need it, we know definitely we're gonna need it. So it's, it's, it's just, there's no reason not to at least get the land. There is, I mean, there are, and there are, you do have some flexibility. I mean, if you can't get a big enough piece and you can't build a big enough facility, you know, you can always put a substation, they could always consider a substation at the work when we move inspections. I mean, there's multiple ways, we just need to get started. I think we're gonna be sitting here with the same situation we were in nineteen ninety-five. We're working, we build a fire station downtown and there wouldn't be land to build a fire station downtown. We had to use the old water plant, which wasn't the ideal location, because it was too far that way. But it was the only land we could get.
Uh I think we have a consensus, I'm seeing some bits.
Yeah.
So uh we'll continue on uh working on a capital project ordinance and uh keep this staff. I mean, that'll end up being a, working with engineer and and plan and to identify sites that we think are good possibilities. Uh working with both the chiefs.
Stephanie, you just gave me a thumbs up that I think only, I believe that means that the food is ready for us.
Uh I think we're all ready. So we're gonna uh mute and pause and take a break and be back. I would say.
If there's not any more questions, uh you know, we can consider a journey.
Twenty minutes or twenty-five minutes?
You're so eager.
Good try.
Believe us. Don't I wish you missed us?
You mean to hit the play up there?
We're ready to get started. Chris, can you please?
So that's pretty much wrapping up the main discussion points on the general fund. I wanted to cover a couple items still and sort of start off with. For this presentation, the general fund started off about four million dollars unbalanced. So we have come a long way. We're not quite there, but we will get there in the next couple weeks. Something new to the budget that we included was some dollars for a downtown facade slash art grant. We've talked about this briefly in the past when I was wanting to do your interest in starting a program. That would be more of a matching program with downtown businesses that could be used for facade upgrades. I mean, haven't worked out all the details, but it could be. Things as simple as somebody repointing the brick on their building, replace the windows. Put new sign in or on a one they're building. Over my career, I've seen it used for multiple items or could be used for downtown art. The same way, there's lots of towns that do that. I think it's been very successful. You know, you would set some simple guidelines, have a committee review it or council could review it. Start with a number of thirty five, forty thousand dollars. Try to spread it out to two, three, four projects, five projects. It's just sort of all depends on your applications.
So you have a max of like five thousand dollars matching anyone.
Have a little flexibility if you don't get a lot of applicants, a slightly bigger project for somebody.
Tim brought this up a couple of years ago.
He did.
Yeah, I got it. I actually wrote a proposal. I probably could dig it up, but a little more than five thousand dollars a project.
So, I mean, I would think so too.
I think you probably gonna have to maybe make them twenty five thousand dollars for something matching brands. Like get four budget for four year or something like that.
I really like the idea, but one thing that I would like to make sure of is that people are aware that downtown is in his national register historic district. And any improvements they make might be eligible for some tax credits if they do it in a historically accurate way. They aren't required to do that, but if they do, they can qualify for tax credits. And that's a great incentive for people to do responsible facades instead of, you know, something that's not. In keeping with the architectural style of the area.
While we're making that public service announcement, I would say it also extends into the residential historic districts we have.
Yeah.
Down south.
Sounds old.
Old South Manhattan. So those, those rules may require you to. Put things back as they historically were, so you couldn't change out windows and put in new modern windows and get the tax credit. I was not proposing that ours would have to be the historic remodel, but that is a bonus to the people. That you could potentially get some side grants and get some tax credits. So. I thought as we were starting the Main Street program, that would be a nice. Way to sort of start showing a little attention downtown. I know we did this in Graham years ago. I believe they're still doing it. I'm pretty certain that every year there are people applying for those funds and, you know, it makes you. A lot of times a business owner wants to do something, but they're needing that little bit extra. And for a lot of them, this is that little bit extra to, to get them to move forward.
Well, it's a great idea and it will be, you make sure we tie it in with the downtown Main Street program, not just. But how do you handle kickback from somebody out of South Rose? And they want to do the same thing. When that money's not available, the view is available downtown with tax money. So how do you explain to, to, to a downtown, how do you explain the difference?
I mean. It is what it is. There is only one historic district downtown.
Well, you just call it, you could just call it your historical district, historical business.
And you would.
Say it's not outside, you're outside the historical business district.
You would have to be in the B one business district. Okay. It wouldn't be something open for the existing businesses. I mean, that gets more into an incentive. You know, the incentive laws require you to make investment, increase your tax value and also looking at increasing jobs. Most towns our size don't do incentives for typical commercial businesses. Yes, a lot of people can say it's unfair. We can argue about that all day long. But a lot of downtowns do it. A lot of them do it in their B one central business district, historic district. That is what I would recommend. I think y'all said Tim brought this up several years ago. Great. We had a lot of success with it in Graham and. Staff thinks it would be a good first step.
Being made with this, whether grants available in this.
Grants for us to be able to do this?
Or for them.
I mean, other folks that have.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't know of any.
Well, and to speak to your point, Ed, I mean, I, I, I've heard that, that argument. You know, we've, we've done some advertising that's been sort of downtown centered and. Kind of tried to steer clear of that, but I also think that it's important to recognize the value of our downtown to our greater city. And what a, what an economic drive it is. And so people, people aren't relocating here because of the strip center. I mean, not to put them down, but. They're drawn to the charm of our historic downtown and so it's, it's economically valuable for us to ensure that it survives. And I, I guess it looks like you have thirty thousand in the budget proposed for this year. I guess my question would be, it is going to require some administering and is, is there someone? Available. I know you've talked about, I'll stretch y'all are here. Do you have someone in mind? I'm not asking you, but. Is there someone that can do that, like can manage it?
I would like for that to fall under the, the Main Street program. Person that we're trying to hire part-time consultant, give them a little project to work on and. I mean, just in my mind, I'm thinking of the committee that would evaluate it would. Probably mostly be made up of folks downtown and then maybe a couple of other folks from the community.
I'd go ahead and, I'd go ahead and, you know, maybe seventy five, ninety. Look like zero to twenty thousand dollar grants. That way you may can give seven or eight or you may can give four big ones. I mean, they don't have to get a full amount. They could do a nine, ninety, a hundred dollar one or a fifty two hundred dollar one, but I'd go a little. Thirty thousand dollars. If you do thirty thousand dollars, you're either going to do one or two grants or they're going to be so small, people are going to think it's not worth the effort. And just go. Not a lot you can do to a building for five thousand dollars other than paint it.
But it would be a match, right? So it would be ten that they would be spending on the building, right?
Now, I would propose to be a match that they be putting that money.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, absolutely. So I think would be matching.
So if they receive five, they're also going to spend that. So it'll be a ten thousand.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You make it fifteen, that means a thirty thousand dollar improvement, up to a thirty thousand dollar.
Right.
Um, yeah, I mean, what if you like did fifty the first year and see how it went?
It would seem to be good.
I kind of think it's starting, I'm sorry, Sean, but starting, starting with fifty for this, because it's going to take a little time to onboard that Main Street coordinator. Sorry, I hate that, obviously, to bring on, to hire that consultant and get them coordinated. Plus, we need to make sure the parameters for the grant are good. We don't want it done half.
I agree.
Internally, our discussion was shooting for an award like January. So that we could get it all together, get everything sort of stabilized. And I think that gives us enough time to, to pull that off well.
Do we have a plan for the, the committee, downtown committee right now?
I mean, we don't quite yet. That's still part of the discussion that's ongoing.
Well, my concern was more along the line of not so much total budget is making it worthwhile. I'd hate for the, I'd hate for the program to pay off because everybody said, well, that's just not really worth the effort. That's, I think fifty's fine.
Well, I hope they won't make the grant so cumbersome to write that it doesn't feel worth it to complete it for five thousand dollars or ten.
I'll just go ahead and tell you, my plan would be to keep it so that you're not writing a five-page application. Tell us what you want to do. Show us that you've got three prices. Describe the project. Do a little script about the building. I'm not thinking, making it so complicated that nobody wants to deal with. I mean, it's a balance and that you don't want it so simple that you can't control or understand what's going on. The goal would be to make it a, a very doable application for everybody to fill out and. To do it right. There's lots of examples for us to pick and choose from and, I mean, y'all know that. We don't like just recreating the wheel from scratch. There's twelve good ones out there and. The commerce folks that we're working with on the Main Street program can lead us in the direction of here's several that we run across that are. Good policies that regulate the, the grant program.
And even though there's fifty grand, it's only going to be, will be for half, even less than half of fiscal year. So we can do it, do this test pilot program and.
Yeah. It also is going to get much time to think about it.
Sure.
Get prices together.
I'm assuming, and I just want to be sure that we made it clear, if this is a fair assumption, that it would not be retroactive. So if I'm, if I'm navigating in front of my building right now and I, and then this pops up in January, I can't. Or can I?
I would recommend that it not get retroactive.
Yeah.
A couple of other just basic general funding waters or try to get most of you right up. The power we have recommended, two percent cost of living. We generally budget the same, looking at merit. I'd like to see the merit come back into the equation this year for the employees, our employees that worked hard this year. I think a lot of the public thinks that C house has been closed, everybody's been working from home. Y'all know in Nether, and that's not been the case. We did close down for a short period of time. Did have to step the skeleton crew in all of the locations. Our emergency services worked completely through like they normally do. Our buildings have opened, still been social distancing, limited meetings. We do have a handful of folks that are still working from home and working at work. But in general, our folks have been here providing the services that they do.
What do you think? What do you think merit two percent?
So generally, that's about what we put in the budget. It varies a little bit what it actually ends up being. I think on average, we're usually bouncing around one point seven five. But I think two percent will clearly cover it.
Last one, the questions I had was that you had a poll, but you didn't show a merit here. Is that, how does that figure into the four million dollar hole?
It's actually in the numbers here already.
I've not certainly, we put them aside last year. I'm certainly.
We were also wanting to do a study of our pay system just to look at the jobs. I don't think you, in the pay ranges, I don't think you will find that all of our jobs and the pay ranges are out of whack. I think we do have some that probably do need adjustments by some market. And then another thing we were wanting to include was. A lot of the departments already have a career ladder. I think a good example is police and fire. Where you have positions that you can move up to. A lot of our departments don't. But then we have employees that are going and getting new certification. They're doing more. You may have where, you know, we just have an accountant or a planner. And I can just go down the list, but you would have another position that said, if you've got this many years experience, you require this. Accreditation or this certification, you're eligible to have a, and I don't know what number would be two and a half percent, five percent increase. It's going to all depend on the jobs that we'd like to look within our departments to, to see if we can give. Some of the employees a place to be able to move up to. We've got some good employees and give them train only to find out that, and they're taking another job at another place not too far away. Because they actually have a place for them to move up. We'd like to try to, to, to keep the folks that will get here and get trained.
Have you, have we, have we seen any leaving?
Not lately, but we hired a decent number of folks. So it's not in every department. Some of the departments have done it, but it's been more of a verbal thing. Where they get an increase because they get a certification. We'd like to get it down in writing and look at, make sure all the departments. If there's a, a career ladder that they could move up into, to just get it to where everybody knows what's going on. It's all on. A policy council approved it and I think it'll help us in the long run.
I don't, I don't have any problem with that. I, I, I think that, you know, you're, you ought to reward people for trying to improve themselves if they can. And, you know, if the job area warrants it, I mean, to be honest, though, in some cases. This, the department you work in, it's just going to be limited no matter how you go back and get a master's degree. You know, it's not going anywhere in this department. So. And may have moved apartments, but yeah, we are released.
That's, that's very true. You can't sit everywhere, but I think we can do some improvements and I think it'll help keep some of our. Younger folks that have come to that that are doing a good job and are continuing to do that.
And I guess I've always been under the impression that the, the, the pay scale, the pay range that we have for positions. Addressed that. So is it, is it a, is it a pay issue or is it a title issue? Are people wanting a better title? And are they actually going to leave because they don't want a better title, even though they've got a good salary, like good benefits? But.
I mean, so, I mean, you had a lot of young folks that are trying to move forward in their career. And being stuck with the same title, even though you had the credentials to get in the door. But maybe you do go get a bachelor's degree or a master's degree or you get the state certifications. Let's just say as a certified budget officer or certified finance officer. There are a lot of other towns that are using those different certifications so that. The employees in the department are wanting to improve their skillset. You, and I'm just throwing out names and numbers. Can move from an accountant to an accountant to more. And it's, I think we have, we have some of that in a lot of the departments, but I think we could clearly expand it.
So Chris, it seems like it was just a couple of years ago, we had PTRC do a pay and scale grade analysis for us.
For the first time ever.
Um, I don't know how many years ago that was. I couldn't tell you if it was two or if it was eight. It was five years ago. Um, so would this be different from that? And would you use the cog? Um, so would this be different from that, and would you use the cog again to accomplish this?
I don't know that we would, to be honest, uh, there are, uh, multiple other consultants out there. Uh, so, a lot of towns do this, uh, every three years, they do a third, a third, a third. Uh, first time is my understanding, I mean, we created job descriptions for everybody the last time, established the grade system, and implemented it, so this would be just not rewriting it, not redoing all that work, but just reevaluating uh, the, the grades, uh, you, we would talk to the department heads, do you have a job description that's just wrong? Uh, so we might, would tweak some here and there, uh, and then like I said, I think it'd be important to also look at, uh, you know, the, the career path in some of the departments.
I'm gonna interject, the people coming out of college now are projected to have seven or eight jobs. God, and said, one job, and today I'm here now with two. My, my observation is there's not near as much loyalty, staying in a position younger generation is, is, you know, almost my generation, and I think anything you can do to improve your one generation of employees makes a lot of sense.
To Tim's point, we do have, uh, fair pay, good benefits, uh, council has done a great job, uh, making sure that's the case, uh, I just think Lawson's point is great, uh, folks are moving around a whole lot more than they used to, and getting trained, uh, which is, we're not staying standing here if they can.
Chris, a couple of thoughts, one, I'm sure you do exit interviews when people leave, and I should give you a, without, maybe then you can get a pretty good idea of why they're leaving. Uh, to what Lawson was saying, it is, it is, we have to, we have an open, we try to look within the company to see if somebody that can move it over or move up. Uh, that doesn't always happen, the skill set's different, but, uh, it's amazing how many times we have been able to do that, and those are people that you keep. Uh, and I'd hire five people, what now, if I could find, if you can find people, it's just impossible, it's impossible.
Uh, I think that's gonna continue, the way the market is right now, I know that's predictable, it's gonna change, but it, it looks like things are, as a nation, really starting to turn around, and I think the growth in North Carolina, uh, the interstate right here, I mean, y'all know, you can be in so many places in twenty, thirty minutes, uh, I think keeping our competitiveness is, is gonna be important.
I think, I mean, I think it holds merit, for example, you got a guy that works the ground crew, mowing, to go and get their CDL. Not only do you have a backup trash truck driver in case somebody's out, but he's not gonna be, he's not gonna wanna do that if he sits at a groundskeeper pay scale, even though he has a CDL, so you keep to keep him from going to another city. You don't go up to a full driver, because you don't have a position for him, but if you do go up enough to keep him interested in staying, uh, but I, I think it holds merit, you just gotta be careful that we're not rewarding people for certifications or, or completions of i- items that aren't relevant to their job area.
So I know what you're talking about, I'm seeing policies written where it really doesn't matter what degree you go get, uh, you go and get a new associate's or a new bachelor's degree, it has nothing to do with the work you're doing, you're not playing in the mood into that, uh, but you, you do end up getting something else. Mine would be more clearly a career ladder, you're doing something that's gonna better yourself, that's gonna help the city, and it's gonna help you stay here. Uh, I, I think that's the important one.
So just gonna say, thank you for having that, so they know that what the next step is, how to make themselves better, how they can get back to themselves and the city, how to go from one of the lower rungs to city manager, whoever else, at least they'll have a path.
It's not a perfect system, but I, I think it's worth it. And how about before we move on to the water and sewer, or any other general questions, tell us what we missed, tell us what was on your mind.
I just have a general question going back to, um, Cola and Merritt, does that apply to both part-time and part-time employees, or just the common employees?
So, in the past, it has not, Cola has not applied to, uh, part-time employees, and Merritt clearly has not. Uh, we did actually change that uh, not too long ago, and looked at our part-time folks and included some Cola. Uh, I clearly would like to include that in the future, uh, we've had some of the same hourly rates for multiple years for our part-time folks, and it's a lot harder for me to come in here and stand in front of you with a list of all the part-time folks and say, I need to move the folks making nine dollars an hour to fifteen dollars an hour, uh, I would like to see their, uh, numbers move up, uh, with the Cola, just like the full-time employees do.
I'm glad to hear that.
I, I don't know, there may be some places out there that do merit increases for, uh, part-time, uh, we have not done that. And we have a, a couple of sort of permanent part-times. Uh, I think every now and then their hourly pay has been adjusted, uh, but, you know, most of our folks are summer help or help during the mowing season or help during the sport season, uh, so, you know, they're working one month, four months, six months, uh, uh, but next year, you know, if it's moving up two percent, the part-time numbers will move up two percent.
Well, your job ranges do that, don't they, for example?
Clearly.
Your, your, your bottom middle and up salary, when you have two percent Cola, all three of those go up two percent.
Say yes, sir.
If you don't, because, if you don't, then for long you'll be in trouble because everybody's against the top.
No, so.
Just on Cola.
Every year with the budget, uh, you adopt the new grades for the new positions, and what you're seeing is that whatever that Cola amount is, uh, the bottom number starts and moves up that two percent, and the range moves up that two.
We should just do that on hourly, and, and, you know, if it's ten dollars, if they're ten dollars an hour, then they go up, what, ten to ten? Two percent, ten fifty, ten twenty-five, whatever it is.
That, that's what we would clearly like to start.
Yeah, I think that's fine.
Definitely. Anything else? Water and sewer goes a whole lot quicker. You know, as we, uh, talked about, and, you know, y'all know at the last meeting, we spent a lot of time talking about our, uh, work or wastewater recovery facility, uh, we have been for years planning some, uh, major rehabs and upgrades. Uh, we can clearly hit the point where that has got to start, uh, that process is starting. Uh, and, uh, it will have an impact on the budget, uh, it's nothing new. Uh, I think Nevan's been talking about it for over ten years, years ago, went through a evaluation before I got here, where, uh, the former, uh, city engineer, Darren Russell, evaluated relocating the plant, merging with other plants, uh, in the end, uh, the decision was made that it made the most sense to invest in the plant we have and to eventually expand the plant that we have. Uh, we went through a, uh, sort of a reevaluation of that, uh, before we hired uh, Jacobs to do the design on the, the renovation that, uh, is, what, the headworks, they call it, the the main entrance, uh, where the water first comes into the wastewater plant, where you have your screen and digester and, uh, grit removal, and, uh, that decision, uh, was sort of re-verified again. It makes the most sense to invest here at our plant, uh, as y'all are aware. Couple of years ago, we have some growth that's happening more on the southern and the western side of town, that's uh, closer to the Graham wastewater plant, and we had the relationship with Graham at the Commerce Park, because the Commerce Park literally sits right above, uh, one of the Graham, uh, regional pump stations, uh, you know, it did not make a whole lot of sense to have their pump station right there and us to have another one, uh, right up the hill, uh, so we, we started that uh, partnership, and, uh, we sort of extended it in that general area and some other parts of town, uh, where we can send seven hundred fifty thousand gallons a day over there, and, uh, that's some of the things that are included in this budget is, uh, some reroute to, or starting the design for some reroute of the, uh, GKN pump station, we call it, uh, that's the pump station, uh, over there, uh, by, uh, the Caterpillar, uh, facility, I mean, literally, right there on the road, right from Gregory Pool, right before you get to their entrance, you'll see a little fenced off area, uh, which is that GKN pump station is what it's called, and then uh, with Cambridge Park being built on the south side of town, uh, that house all, and we spent a little money to oversize, uh, comes right up to the road, and it's only about three thousand feet, uh, before it, uh, you can have an extension to go down uh, from the Arbor Creek pump station, uh, through Cambridge Park, and the, the pump station built in Cambridge Park, uh, pumps all the way to the Graham plant. Uh, so rerouting some of that to take the load off the plant that we have now, uh, makes good sense to do. So you, you save some money to start the design of that, uh, and, uh, all of this, uh, is not free. Uh, some of the most expensive, uh, money you can spend in town is a water plant, a wastewater plant. Uh, y'all know, we jointly own the water plant in Graham, uh, we own half of the water plant and capacity. Uh, and we have payments, as they do capital at the water plant, we have to pay our half share of that. Uh, there's no major renovations going over there now, but there are some yearly capital projects. Our agreement, uh, with Graham also is the same, uh, in the budget, our some, our share, we're nowhere near fifty percent of the wastewater plant. Uh, but, uh, it's a sort of our fair share of the capital that will be going down there. Uh, in order to, uh, get the loan for this first renovation of the plant, uh, we're gonna need a ten percent rate increase on both the water and sewer rates. Uh, we're anticipating, uh, most likely needing the same next year, uh, that's about a little over seven million dollar project. Uh, we're gonna need to, uh, uh, get the bids for that, and the permits and bids in the next couple of months, be bidding that, uh, this summer, early fall, uh, and then getting under construction on that. Uh, y'all heard Fran sort of explain uh, inflow and infiltration, the, the water that gets in our sewer system, or whether it be from a crack in the pipe, it'd be a creek that's so over, overflowed that it's getting into the manhole sticking up above the ground for the lid. Uh, when a very, very, very wet year last year, uh, here in Nevada had over eighty inches of rain. So, what we would see in normal daily inflow and infiltration increase to three, four thousand gallons a day, and so uh, that rain event, uh, actually takes our capacity, the, the way the state permits and makes us regulate on pay for the flow coming in, uh, they're looking at that flow coming in, sort of an average of every month, and uh, you know, you're looking at the last twelve months, uh, every month that passes, one drops off, the new one picks up, and so these rain events we had over the last year, especially first part of this year and end of last year, bumped our numbers up, they're gonna stick with us, uh, for, you know, ten, eleven, twelve more months, and uh, that actually, basically because of, uh, those rain amounts, those averages went up, and you can watch the flow rate and the plank go up, just as the rain is coming in, and the rain drops and the flow rate goes down. It's so much, uh, infiltration, uh, sort of a double whammy for us. So we are starting the design for the half a million expansion, uh, that's been talked about for years. Uh, it, it's been phased with this first renovation, a half a million expansion from two and a half to three, and then we'll be evaluating the numbers, and in several years, we're gonna need a, uh, at least a one million gallon. We are, uh, talking about trying to submit an application this fall for what they call an SRF grant. It's a state revolving fund, generally those funds come from the beds, the tax downs to state. Federal estate system has been set up for years, uh, you can apply, hoping to get, uh, grant money for very low interest money. There's a slight chance we could get some grant money, we may get a little bit of it, but many thanks, we will get, uh, the renovation funded, the grant money, uh, that we think we have, or I'm sorry, the half a million expansion. Uh, I think we got a chance to get some, uh, some lower interest money that we'll see on the, our normal borrowing market, so like to go ahead and, uh, get that money in the budget, uh, get that application submitted. Here till, uh, for a part of next year, if we're funded or not, uh, but the, the rates that they're looking at look very good, and uh, we're anticipating a lot of this federal money that's coming down, uh, just like we can get a piece of it. Uh, the states are also getting a piece of it, a lot of times the state is, uh, getting new money into these existing programs that they already have set up to help fund infrastructure, uh, so hopefully we'll, uh, feel the benefit of some of that, it's some, some lower, uh, interest rates.
The more, the more we have build ready or engineers ready, I think in the next two years, better off we'll be for those kind of programs.
So.
I mean, they're gonna, they're gonna, there's gonna be a fair amount of infrastructure money coming.
We agree wholeheartedly, and, uh, uh, myself, uh, I'm giving Preston a lot of credit. He's, he's spent some time in the last three weeks, uh, working with Fran, working with Si, uh, trying to get multiple of our projects, uh, lined up, uh, so that we could, uh, meet those criterias. Uh, Mr. Bunny was asking about the money, I mean, we know about this first, uh, funding coming through, we don't know all the details how to spend it. Infrastructure is clearly a big piece of it. Uh, we clearly have, just like everybody else across the nation, uh, big water and sewer needs, especially on our system that's underground, Nevan's done a decent job maintaining it, uh, but I don't know of anybody that's got a leak-proof type, perfect system, I mean, that, that doesn't exist, you gotta go back to our first wastewater plant. Uh, was about the nineteen twenties, I believe, uh, and so you get the first piece of a plank down there, you gotta have pipes in the ground from this oldest part of town to get down there. Uh, so we've got a line that's been going on the ground since then, and we've got some needs. Uh, I'm very thankful for, probably I guess the first time, and if it all comes through like they're talking about, uh, that there is real funding coming directly to the cities, uh, to handle some of that. So, we, we are and have been evaluating other projects, uh, some of the recent stuff that we've been evaluating and submitting were uh, transportation projects, for your information, uh, and once again, I was pressed into the lion's share of this and brands and Si of looking at some of these projects that were linking some of the subdivision sort of out on the edge, like, uh, out on Third Street or Governor's Rain and Copperstone, and out of Ashbury, out of Collington, uh.
Mill Creek.
Mill Creek, yeah.
We didn't submit Mill Creek, we actually have a decent amount of development that's looking out there, that is possibly gonna make that connection.
What do we, what do we anticipate? Long range or maybe not too long range between the bypass on seventy and eleven? I mean.
So between seventy and.
The bypass where it crosses and Gibson Road, for example. I mean, the the north end of Gibson Road near seventy is gonna be prime real estate. Because people can jump right on the bypass and be at the interstate two, two, three minutes. Is that an area that we still could, talking about that old old plans? Send the sewer to Hall River Pump Station to go to Bronington.
You have to see a smile on that. We have had some discussion about that, trying to look at that old agreement, which was done. Before I got here, so clearly over eight years ago. To see what could happen in the future. We don't have any clear definite answers on that. But we are evaluating it. That area, our water and sewer doesn't cover really anything. Our main line comes down seventy, but once you get off of seventy, we don't have any water line extensions over there. We don't have any sewer over there. Years ago, y'all remember there was a subdivision that was trying to get approved. Right before the market crash and that was when that discussion came up. I think it's possible so far, we're not hearing any folks talking about it. There's a lot of people evaluating that and there's some starting slowly to move that way. But it's clearly worth evaluating as part of our long range plan.
Pops open, it pops open a lot of land between Highway seventy and Woodlong Road through the middle of the country there at Craftique. And all the land from seventy back, I mean, that's. That's just the perfect place to put a businesses for people to stop on the way home, pick up groceries or whatever.
The south side stays out of the watershed. Once you sort of cross seventy, you get into the watershed. So the rules get a whole lot tougher on the bigger lots, start getting closer to the critical watershed. It's the same way. We don't have a pump station, which it would take over in that general area. I think you're right, as other properties that are. Cheaper to get service to start disappearing than they are. Folks are gonna start looking over there. As of yet, we haven't had any inquiries. We get people who are on the edge of what we have now that are looking at lots. A vacant, I mean, y'all know a vacant lot in Memphis. Even what you would say is not a good lot in the past. There's a lot of demand for it. We are looking at that, but I think it's still just a little ways away. The stuff, this side of Craftique or this side of bypass is a little bit easier. I think people will start looking at that. But it does get, you get into the watershed rules when you get north and it's sort of like everything on that north side of town. It gets a little more complicated, but.
If you consider, if you consider what's happened since some of us came on the council. Long range isn't, this is, the long range just isn't what it used to be.
It's coming.
Long range is not twenty years down the road anymore. We're five, five or six years down the road.
Now, I mean, y'all know, this, this part of North Carolina, North Carolina as a whole is one of the hottest markets in the country. There are a lot of people, not just moving here, but moving to North Carolina. And the hottest areas are clearly between the triangle and the triad and the Charlotte region. And where, where the two interstates.
Going back to what you were discussing earlier with respect to the. The upgrades to the water resource recovery facility and the need for ten percent increases. And our water and sewer rates, that's a, that's a hefty increase. And I understand, I, I'm not saying it's not needed, but I do think what's going to be really crucial. If, if we're gonna do that is a, an education campaign to help citizens understand. I mean, not the, not getting too dependent to the weeds of it, but just the why behind. A pretty significant increase, especially two years in a row, if that's, if that's what's gonna be needed.
I mean, that's exactly what it's looking like now. We actually had planned to do one. Last year during the summer, as you'll remember, as we were putting together the budget, COVID started. We did make a decision not to, to do the increase last year. Cause the plan was from the previous year to do that effective last July. We talked about then doing it in January and when we reevaluated our circumstances. And December, January, we made the decision not to do one this past January. But to wait and do it this year. So we, we were trying to spread that a little bit longer. But the time is clearly here. And we're looking at it right now. We'll reevaluate it again next year, this time. I, I just, I want to say the words is it clearly looks like we're gonna need the ten percent this year and next year. If it turns out next year, things look better, the rates come in a little bit better. Maybe some of the system development fees, which is also being evaluated. Y'all heard that at the last meeting. You know, we have to go through a review process on those system development fees, those are the fees that. For every new residential or even commercial or industrial water and sewer tap that's made. So for every new house, every new apartment, every new townhouse, every new business. We have a system development fee, which is a fee that the. It could be the whoever's building the lots or the apartments, whoever's building the business, based on the size of their water meter. We have done a study that Alley Winds is updating right now. That shows what the equivalent residential unit fee is. That then should the amount of water that that meter could be using to make sure. The new residents or business are paying their fair share of the capital. That is a regulated policy written by the legislature. And we did the first one two years ago or three years ago. And so this is the first update to that. France is looking at some of these. The new update on the renovation that we're doing, also looking at the. I mean, we'll need a water tank in a couple of years. So there's a. Engineering analysis you do to meet the state standards so that we can justify what our system development fees are. Our, our current schedule is to have that in front of you for a public hearing. Also at the G M council meeting, the same meeting that you'll be at up in the budget.
And I think Jill's point is well taken. I think somebody, that'd be a perfect product for someone like fuck them making off of it. Somebody should make a matrix. Cause first thing you're gonna hear is, why should I pay for all this growth?
Yes.
But somebody needs to show them that had there not been the growth and the development fees over the past twenty years. Your water and sewer weight rates would have been thirty-five percent higher, thirty-seven percent higher because of the increase in cost of Jordan Lake rules. All and, and general upgrade and upkeep. Somebody just need to show them a matrix. Here's where your. Here's where your rates would have been without growth. Here's what your rates are now. And here's for the expansion, so you can see the expansion is clearly in between where you would have been anyway. Had we not had the growth that required the change.
That's exactly what I was gonna follow up.
I think that's a great point. We're, we're gonna get beat up if we don't, which is fine, but it's not fair. I mean, it's not fair to those people that have come in for everybody to think, well, you're responsible for my rates going up. Actually, you're responsible for my rates staying down over the last thirty years.
And, and that is not the perception. Every time there's a tax or fee increase, citizens think that it is because of growth.
I think your, your point's great.
Get the message across that that is not true.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. So like the major work we're doing now, seven point two million is not an expansion. It's a renovation. The, the, the work that needs to be done, needs to be done now. It's work that can't wait.
And imagine paying for that with, with a population of four thousand people.
Correct.
So that, that's what somebody needs to show on a chart.
That might, might would change a little bit, but mostly it's gonna be right where it is. And you, you can't not invest in your water and your wastewater system. And that, that's your lines and your plants. And I mean, I've said it for most of my career. You can put off a renovation of your plants, but growth or no growth, you're gonna be doing major renovations. Most of the time due to changing laws that are protecting our water, cleaning our water. I mean, it's a ten, fifteen, twenty year. It's getting more like ten. Because the rules are getting tougher and tougher. We're getting better science. They're writing rules that are making us do more. So I mean, I would tell you point blank, I'd recommend you raising rates a little bit every year. Trying to avoid that capital cost you're gonna have ten years from now and twelve years from now. It, it's easy to not raise rates and I mean, I, I've, I've been there where one year we had a forty percent rate increase. Because we finally had to make some major renovations and things looked good over years. That's a bad year if you work at city hall to, to tell everybody this is what we have to do. But going up on rates, I mean, I don't know about your house, but it's easy for me to go up two percent on something. It's a lot harder to go up four, forty percent in one year. So ten's a little much, but. We're at the point where we have to move forward.
Well, somebody, somebody could take four dates, nineteen ninety, nineteen ninety-five, two thousand, two thousand and ten. And show the population, show the water shore rates then, and then show the effect of seven point five million dollar upgrade. To your system would, would have resulted in for each of those rates. And you'll see that in nineteen ninety, the rate should have been twelve percent higher than they were. Two thousand, it should have been twenty-two percent higher than they were, et cetera, et cetera, without the growth. The growth kept them stable and actually ten percent is not really unstabilizing anything. I just, I think, I think we, somebody really needs to put some effort into.
My mind is going somewhere else. Give me a minute. Anything popping your mind, Preston? Preston has dove in on this the last month. With France really trying to wrap his brain around all this.
And I think Councilman Bradley making a good point. We, another community I was at years ago, we joined a regional plant. And we actually showed the citizens there how being part of a larger plant actually kept the rates lower than what they would have been as a small standard on the plant. So that makes sense. The other thing, a month and now, or kind of a phrase that should be said on this is similar. To what the city manager said, this is, this rate increase is for renovation. So it's a maintenance issue that would occur no matter what, whether growth was there now. A half a million gallon expansion, that is more related to growth. And that's one of the reasons we're proposing a system development fees to be reevaluated to help with that. And also pursue the state revolving fund. But the, this increase really comes down to a maintenance issue. That as you said, Councilman Bradley would be done, no matter what the difference is. We've grown so much that this, this cost could be shared by a lot of this new growth that, that we would not pay. So you made an excellent, excellent point on that.
And the same, the same argument carries forward because the growth you're preparing for now. Will sustain the system into the future so that the people that are here now, that population won't bear the cost of twenty years from now. You had to spend eighteen dollars on a renovation that's required, not because of growth, but because of changes. Or breakdown of systems or new ways to do treatment or whatever.
I mean, the other thing I would add is as we look at where our rates are now and with the increases. When you look at our peers or towns our size, we're still in there where our rates aren't on the high end. Our rates are still good rates. It's harder to compete with some of our neighboring cities to the west to actually wholesale water. We don't have other towns that were wholesaling and selling water to, or selling large amounts of sewer to. So Evan's just, we don't have the other towns around us where we're able to, to sell off excess and, and dump with the revenue. We're evaluating everything we can to make sure that with system development fees that. The folks moving here are paying their fair share. Like I said, we can't just set that where we want to. We have to follow the state guidelines and we're looking to make sure that we all are doing that. And, and we are keeping what is fair for the residents and businesses that are looking here. One of the other things that is all we remember is we did the North Carolina Commerce Department. Alaman's, our partners are Alaman's County and City of Graham. Alaman's County, back to that original agreement that's been paying us a hundred thousand dollars. Back for an investment into our, our water and sewer system that happened over there. And that agreement and that funding runs out. So that's a hundred thousand that we're losing that we have been used to. For these last, I want to say. Ten years. So. Ten years doesn't seem right. Yeah. So this is the last year of that, but, and that's all according to the agreement. Our investment earnings, I mean, this goes for water and sewer and the general fund. I mean, y'all know what you get on investments in the bank, they're pretty big. Most folks don't understand that in North Carolina, our finances, our spending, our ability to borrow. Is all governed by the local government commission, which is a department at the state. They also govern where we can invest our money. We can't invest our money in stock market. It is in stuff that is, you're guaranteed the return basically. So the kind of money returns that you see from your bank are not too far off from what we see. So that trend doesn't look into change. Years ago, we used to actually compute what. The tax, the number of cents on the tax rate that we would be earning from those. Back then it was just simple CDs and those days are long gone. It's a little bit better than it has been, but it's clearly nothing to brag about. So I mean, right now we're predicting revenues in the water and sewer fund at nine point seven million dollars. That is a ten percent increase. As I was talking. We had some new pickup trucks in the water and sewer fund. We have. A equipment operator that we're recommending approval and a maintenance crew leader. If y'all remember, just a couple of years ago, the water and sewer fund was combined with the general fund. Wayne had a lot on his plate the way that Evan has grown and we did split that a couple of years ago. So the chunk now is over public works, a street stormwater sanitation. How is over the water and sewer. Pump stations, collection, distribution. We have needed to pick up a few employees on both of those to get our crews full. They're doing a whole lot more than they were able to do when it was all one group. When we were smaller, having that flexibility to move one direction or another and what was needed. We could justify it, just a straight utilities department, a straight corporate department. We've clearly grown where that's what's needed. I think this really, this year gets those two departments. Much closer to operating where they can have separate crews go out, have a crew leader. And start doing a little bit more work. City crews are actually doing rather than. City crews are actually doing rather than just contracting about. You mentioned the equipment operator and the maintenance crew leader, uh that's the two positions that were requested. Uh we think that those are needed. And I think we've covered a lot of this. Uh we will be starting that construction, all the renovation, we will be starting the. Design work on the half a million uh expansion uh applied for the uh dental grant and loan. Uh we'd like to get started on the GKN pump station regrouting. Uh we have uh like there's a little bit of money for the inflow and infiltration, we're actually doing. Some uh metering out in the system right now. Uh I talked bad about rain causes problems, but we need just a little bit because. Uh that's what shows us the impact of the rain as we've got the meters and the uh. Sewer lines trying to figure out where our worst lines are. You have to do some testing to start looking at those flows of uh what which. Main lines are going up the most as it rains. We are uh hopefully on our last year of our meter replacement program. Y'all have heard us talk about that over and over and over again, you know, we roughly have six thousand meters in town. Uh we've been spending about a half a million dollars a year uh moving to those new very accurate. Uh meters that uh do tie uh to a cell signal. And uh report to us the readings, so we don't have a meter reader. Out physically going by or getting out of the truck to read meters. Uh they they are literally being sent to a server, sent then to our server. It reports on people leaks. Tim calls and says, hey, I got my water bill and it's uh gone from three thousand gallons a month. To twelve thousand gallons a month. And it used to be, we would go, you got a leak, well, where's my leak? I don't have a leak, well. We can guess, we can tell you to call a plumber. There was a toilet, you jiggled the handle on and it stopped, but it ran for three days while I get out of town. We took and proved it other than this is what the reading is. Uh these new meters. We can get the information, send it to you, show you the charts, and it's gonna show you that. Uh last Thursday at twelve midnight, uh your water bill went up, it stayed up. Uh till six o'clock the next morning, you're gonna follow the chart and. Next year, we we want to roll out the process of uh giving the customers access to that information. Uh just like you have on so many other things in your life where you can uh. Set up an account, get your login, get your password, tell it to one of the lurks if you uh thinks you got a leak and. Uh so you're gonna get an email, get a text uh saying, hey, you got a problem rather than. Getting the water bill thirty days later uh that that shocks you, so that should help a lot of folks to. To see when they have a problem uh to get it fixed. It it's not perfect, you can decide that. Oh, that doesn't look that bad, I'll just let it go, I'll call a plumber in a month, well, it's gonna be logging every bit of it. And when you do that leak, uh every second of the day, twenty-four hours to thirty days, it adds up quick.
How like, what's the longevity on those things? Do they fail often?
So, I mean, it's like everything else, uh. Depending on, a lot of folks have never really looked in their uh water meter box. Uh a lot of those boxes stay underwater all the time. Uh a lot of them are never underwater, a lot of them are underwater. Every time it rains and it comes up and goes down, I mean, generally, you're hoping for a. Fifteen-year life out of a meter. Now we have a meter that's got a little computer in it, uh it's got a battery in it. Uh we're probably not gonna get that life from the entire piece of it. There's probably gonna need some batteries down the road, uh but I I think we're gonna find out that. We're probably still in that ten, fifteen-year range. It used to be meters never changed. Uh now they're changing all the time because they've got technology tied into them. But I think the the bang for the buck is clearly gonna be there in in the information that we have.
If I could add, uh the public utilities director, Kyle Smith, had also shared that we have a ten-year warranty on the meters as well.
So, and the guy that handles the warranty, it used to be our guys were out there trying to figure out what's going on. Did the wire get cut? Uh they send him a list and he comes to town and. He's out there trying to figure out what needs to be fixed and getting it fixed. So y'all, I mean, y'all heard Kyle talk about uh the CIP stuff. We we talked about the uh expansion, uh. There's some aeration, electrical uh basin upgrade at the wastewater plant. Uh meter change out, some uh water line replacements. Uh Tim was talking about, he thought we were done with our galvanized lines, but we're trying to get those knocked down, knocked out this year. Uh that GKN pump station reroute design, we wanna get that going. Uh we did take out the inflow and infiltration in the big capital, hoping to use. Uh the the federal money that's coming our way in June, uh that was a one point seven million request. Y'all are very familiar with our oversized reimbursement, developers extending the line down the road. He only needs a six, but we wanna be able to serve others in the future. We'll pay the difference in the material costs for the six to a eight, if that's what we need, or a six to a twelve. Uh so we've got some some of those that will be paid out this year. Uh basic water repair and maintenance, same with the sewer. Uh you know, we have twenty-one pump stations found. Uh that's a lot of pump stations for a town our size, but you know, our our plants here in the middle of town and based on the topography. Sewer does not flow uphill, so you get over the hill, you need a pump station to get it backed up and get it to the plant. We do have some one nineteen and that's utility stuff still, that now that one came out actually. Uh we got some relocations uh hitting us for the uh Medevan Oaks. Uh project that uh could potentially come in the next year, so. I say, uh most of his requests to be funded this year, and just FYI. The Medevan Oaks interchange project that starts from uh Arrowhead widening. Uh south to the interchange, basically doubling the size of the bridge, leaving the bridge, but widen it on both sides. Continuing the winding all the way down south and starting to taper back to the existing road section. Uh at the Walmart signal has been funded, the contract has been awarded. And that is a NCDOT, North Carolina Department of Transportation project, just like the uh. One nineteen relocation. They are planning a uh pre-construction meeting with the contractor in the next couple of weeks. So people in Medevan will start seeing construction happen. Uh had somebody, we had a lot of complaints about the striping on that road and the signals. We have passed those on over and over again, a lot of the people in town have passed those on. I got another one today, reiterated that point with the DOT folks, that I hope and pray. There is some temporary striping being done as part of all this. They assured me that there was, and that they were gonna try to get it looked at even before it started. Uh we do not control NCDOT, uh we have a good relationship with them, uh so. Uh folks will need to bear with us, uh it's gonna be. Uh a mess, just like it has been at one nineteen, but uh that project is fixing to storm.
I'm sorry, thank you for the update. That was what I was gonna ask you about, was when when that was gonna start, because the traffic there has become pretty unbearable.
It's horrible.
And folks come out of Tanger or out of Arrowhead and they don't see if they can make the clear law intersection or not. So the the block, they block the box all the time, and I wonder if maybe we could get. Um police officer every once in a while out there at rush hour just to help with. Telling people, don't enter the intersection if you can't clear the intersection. You evidently, people are not taught that around here, but it's really very poor um. Poor um driving skills and people are being rude, so if we could just ask people to be polite to one another. Until we get through this, it would be really helpful.
So uh that was very kind of you, I I I think they see and most of them maybe don't care. Uh but uh that project is clearly needed, we're so glad it got delayed a year. Uh but it has funded, uh the contract has been awarded and uh construction is gonna start shortly.
That's planned to complete in fall of twenty-three?
I didn't look that up.
Twenty-four, right?
I mean, it's easily, I did not look it up.
So let's say, let's say more than two winter seasons.
I'm sure.
Please, 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 can we get some detours or some guidance on how people can avoid that, leaving Tanger or anywhere else around town?
And I'll, I'll talk to DOT.
Traffic or traffic, you get off on Buckhorn and come in from the from the back, that would be a.
Yes, exactly.
Detour that would, that would be.
Not gonna do that on Sunday.
But I guess uh we need to start changing some traffic patterns as soon as possible, because it's gonna be bad for two possibly. Sounds like possibly even three years.
Well, and I think uh when construction starts, uh people do start figuring out uh that they gotta change and. It it's, it's not gonna be fun, construction is never fun, but if, I mean, in the email I wrote this morning, like. That's the worst place in town, uh there's no doubt about it, uh but I mean, it it's like kids growing up. There's growing pains for real and uh that one's gonna be real, we can talk to them about uh doing some of that. We do not control the messaging uh that they put out. Uh I've tried for a long time and and I I love our partners at DOT, uh but. They, they they run DOT and do a great job, but it's. And and they would say the same about the way we run down, it's probably not the way they would uh want us to do things either, but.
I think I think Medevan Oaks see see the star on the horizon, I think they see the improvements at the end. I'm definitely apologizing in the meantime, but anyway, that people can avoid that.
No, I saw, I saw two years of jokes, cutting remarks, calling these near idiots. Because of the diverging intersection on one nineteen. Have you ever seen that intersection backed up?
Nope. Are they planning another divergent diamond?
So they evaluated that uh because uh Mr. Bradley is correct, in my opinion.
Yep.
Uh there are less accidents over there, traffic moves very quicker.
They don't have room in Medevan Oaks to do what they do.
Seems to be the most backward thing you've ever done in your life, but it's very effective. Uh they don't have the room to do it there, they they evaluated it. Uh one of the clear things I heard was they would have to have closed the driveways for all three of the gas stations on the north side. That would have been a very, very expensive thing to do, yeah, so they're doing. The last I heard, what was called a tight diamond, which is more the traditional uh interchange. So it will not be a diverging diamond. But it it will be similar to what's there now, but the bridge will have, my memory is. It it's basically double and it'll be an extension on one side, extension on the other side, and then the lanes on both sides. Uh also increased.
Well, this sounds like an excellent opportunity for our public information officer to help the public learn how to get other ways out of town.
We got two days covered, Tim.
What we gonna do the rest week? No, I I think, I think that's exactly right, though, but I mean, we just need to be very careful. That we don't take on DOT's responsibility or the raft, I mean, it's not our project, you know? And it's not being done the way people think it ought to be done, which was obvious with one nineteen. Then uh it's not our responsibility to explain, uh DOT builds the road that way. But I think it's good that we would offer people suggestions on how to, what times to avoid that area, how to get around it. Optional, optional travel plans, etc., etc. I feel for the businesses, because, you know, they, some of those right there at intersection probably will see some suffering.
Suffering, yeah.
Yeah, but this issue will pass in three years.
It will, and it will clearly be better. I'm seeing some antiness, uh any closing questions, remarks?
Uh you have sent us what now, what did, what have we already received on our emails?
Got the uh PowerPoint that was uh before you tonight.
Okay.
Are we, so we are not meeting on Thursday?
We are not meeting on Thursday night.
You can go past one day.
I might be one of these, like, if I get more than lasagna. At least we go over and eat.
So shout out Junction on Seventy for excellent.
Thank you. They're doing a great job.
South of the E local.
All right, anything else?
We're done.
Thank you, Chris. Thank you, Chris, well done. Thank you, Daphne, Preston.